Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM. Please allow me to call to order the Merrimack Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, July 19th. Let me remind everyone who will address the board tonight to make sure that you sign in on the clipboard on the table. Speak clearly into the microphones and make sure the microphones are turned on. Let me appoint our two alternates to voting positions in for Lynn and Vincent, so Alistair and Jeff can vote tonight.
Nelson.
I'm sorry, Alistair.
Nelson.
Nelson.
Yes. Yes, Jeff for Lynn, Nelson for Vincent.
Let's see, our next planning board meeting will be August 2nd, 2016, at 7:00 PM in this Matthew Thornton room. With that, we have arrived at the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report for tonight. Tim, what have you?
I have regional impact recommendations for items four and five on the agenda tonight. Item four, for Joseph Mitchell and Nicholas Delamis, the project proposes a conversion of a single-family residence to a multifamily residential building. And item five, Selco Partnership Verizon Wireless and Merrimack Village District, the project proposes to construct a new telecommunications tower on land owned by MVD off Turkey Hill Road. And I just want to note that in accordance with RSA 12-k, all municipalities within a 20-mile radius of the proposed tower have been notified of the public hearing.
So the staff's recommendation is that neither of these projects serve regional impact?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Jillian, and I'm sorry for calling you, Tim. What's the will of the board with respect to the regional impact recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation that neither of these projects has a regional impact, and therefore we should not need to carry that procedure out.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? I was going to call him Nelson, just to yank him around a little bit. Desiree seconds the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So the motion carries. Let's see, we are six here tonight, 6-0-0. Jillian, is there anything else that you have for the board?
That was all.
Anything that the board has for Jillian or Tim?
I just said one item I wanted to bring up, that though it hasn't officially been filed, we did receive a fax from one of the butters to the Merrimack Hotel site that was recently approved the last month by the board for the subdivision and the site plan, indicating their potential intent to appeal that decision. My understanding, and Jillian can correct me if I'm wrong, is they had mistakenly believed that the appeal was through the planning board. We informed them of the proper statutory procedure if they wanted to follow through on an appeal to Superior Court. They have exactly two days left on the clock in order to do so, but I think and hope that this is something that can be handled without going through the appeal process. It's the butler that had concerns relative to their parking easements on the property, and apparently there hasn't been any communication back and forth between the two, and he felt that the appeal might be the way to get their attention.
That certainly could be. I was under the impression that the applicant represented that they had communicated with the...
He certainly did. He represented us to be back. So we received that, like I said, we informed them of the proper process if they do want to follow through on the appeal, and we'll see what happens with that.
We may be able to work it out. So it was the subdivision that they were objecting to, or the site plan? Or we don't know yet?
It was the easements.
So that would have been part of the subdivision?
Yeah.
Because that was left on the retained lot. Alistair?
I notice Jillian and I have been in communication about the car wash near the old shores, and we noticed that they got at one stage eight of these peculiar banner signs out. And Jillian's efforts, they initially put up some banners that looked very nice because they were patriotic, they'd got the stars and stripes. I noticed they've reverted back to type, and they're now using the crummy ones again. Maybe they should be advised that it's not the thing to do.
They're under a second notice, so...
Thank you so very much. Thank you.
I'm not sure whether it would require a notice, but I did notice as I drove by the same car wash that they seemed to have developed a used car business.
I noticed that as well.
In front of the car lot as well. Anything else, my members of the board, for staff? Welcome, Mr. Boyd, thank you. With that, we are finished with the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report. That brings us to item three on our agenda, which is Chad E. Brannan, PE of Fieldstone Land Consultants for Red Oak Property Management Incorporated as the applicant, and Turkey Hill Road 136 Trust as the owner. And this is continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a subdivision of one lot into two lots. The parcel is located at 136 Turkey Hill Road in our residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts, Tax Map 4C Lot 386. And the agenda item is continued from the June 7th, 2016, meeting. And my notes say that, Tim, you have some introduction for us on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If you recall, this item was continued prior to any presentation being made at the June 7th meeting. The reason for that continuance was a couple of significant issues that were raised in my memo that I had written for that June 7th meeting. One being the lot size to remain with the existing apartment buildings. We needed to ensure that in order for them to retain their non-conforming status, that there was a sufficient lot area left with that lot to ensure that they would have met the requirements that were in place at the time that those apartment buildings were permitted under our zoning ordinance. That change has been made. They have also updated and performed appropriate boundary survey and wetland delineation to address the other comments that I had relative to the completeness of the plans. We believe that with these two items having been addressed, that the project is ready to move forward with the planning board for acceptance and the decision tonight.
Thank you. Tim is the applicant here. Please come forward.
I do have one other note that we did receive through email that should have been in front of you tonight, a waiver request letter regarding the sidewalk or paved pedestrian way, that the board eventually will either need to take action on the waiver request or determine under the requirements and regulations, because this is a minor subdivision, you do have the option of determining that that condition is not applicable.
Okay, I've got that. Once you've had a minute to sign in and settle in, please introduce yourself and tell the board about your project.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Chris Geida, in lieu of Chad Brannan tonight, he couldn't be here, I apologize. I am a certified wetland scientist and soil scientist with Fieldstone Land Consultants, and I did the redelineation out here for the wetlands. Essentially, I believe this is a fairly straightforward, one lot into two lot subdivision. We addressed those comments that the board had earlier. You can see from the plan that there's a single house in the dark, the dark red, near the center of the lot. The yellow is the test pit and 4K area for the septic system, so it'll have an onsite septic, and it'll be serviced by municipal water. There's no wetlands crossings, there's no other waivers, with the exception of the waiver request for the sidewalks.
Okay. So will the board with respect to determining whether the application is complete and prepared for review?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the application is now complete, following the work that's been done by the Fieldstone Land Consultants, and therefore it should be considered by this board.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Jeff Sebring got the second in before you, Nelson? Any discussion about completeness? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Now we are 7-0-0 with the arrival of our town council rep for acceptance. Does the board wish any further presentation from the applicant on the two-lot subdivision? Or does the board have any questions from the applicant? Nelson?
I have a couple of questions. My first one has to do with Tim's...
You're not turned on.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. The first has to do with Tim's memo of July the 12th. Tim, under item number two, Boundary Survey and Existing Conditions, the last sentence there says, "As staff pointed out in the original memo, neither of the plans referencing Note 10 have been recorded in the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds, making verification of the referenced plans even more difficult." I think you're suggesting that those plans should be recorded there. No?
No, that is a remnant from, this is actually Robert's memo for tonight's meeting. My memo was the one that was prepared for the June meeting. So I'm the one that raised that issue previously. With the updated survey information that's been provided, there is no longer any real reason to need to reference those, because the information that would have been gleaned from those reference plans has now been provided on the plan itself.
Okay, so that's not a concern?
Correct.
Okay, then I have just two other...
Before we leave that one, does that mean that we should remove this Note 10 off of the plan, since these reference plans aren't really providing...
It's still valid for reference purposes to provide those notes, it's just a matter that nobody would be able to go to the registry and find boundary information from those. But any information and plans that typically have been used to generate the information that is shown on the plan is properly referenced, even whether it's recorded or not.
Would it be beneficial, or is there any reason at all, to have the surveyor, whoever has these plans, provide a copy to the community development department?
We already have them.
All set. Fine on me. Go ahead, please.
Okay, a couple of other questions. First of all, this neighborhood, and this road and all, is on public sewer. And I wondered, is there not a requirement that it hook into the public sewer?
The proposed location of the structure, the new home, single-family home, is beyond the 200 feet that is required both by the local ordinance and the state requirements to connect to sewer.
Okay.
In addition, the sewer in that location is not actually in the road, it's a partial cross-country sewer that is actually on the west side of Turkey Hill Road, so it's not even in the town's right-of-way in that location.
Okay. I forgot about the 200 feet, thank you. The other thing is, I noticed that as they, from their site plan, which we've got a small copy of, and it's a little bit hard to read, but there's, the drive and house and everything comes pretty close to the setback lines for wetlands, especially the driveway. And the other, the house location is shown on the, just about touching the setback line, side setback line. I wonder if it would be, it seems to me appropriate that the applicant be asked to flag the boundaries of the wetlands in that, on that site, for the benefit of whomever is going to build it. I don't know if the owner is planning to build himself, or, but whoever, that the boundary and setback be flagged for protection.
That boundary has been flagged, sir. So it's been refreshed with black and white wetland flags, and this setback is 25-foot buffer to that, which the driveway does not encroach into that.
It looks like it touches it from this plan that I have, and that's why I...
That's the 40-foot building setback, Nelson, that it touches.
Okay.
It's well outside of the 25-foot buffer. The only additional comment I'll make with that is because this is a subdivision and not a site plan, that reference to potential house site is reference-only, that could be built anywhere within the site, as long as it complies with setback requirements. And if it's within 200 feet from sewer, it's going to have to connect to sewer.
Well, that's why I wanted to have the boundary flagged. If it was a critical boundary, if he's going to start building a driveway through there, that they not...
Typically, we'll see at the permitting process, we'll see a foundation, certified foundation plan submitted to the building department that will verify compliance with setback requirements before the full house is completed.
Including the drive?
The driveway, no.
Yeah.
However, the driveway...
The driveway's permitted to be closer to the wetlands than the house is.
Yeah, the house has to be 40 feet from the wetland boundary, the driveway is only required to be outside of the 25-foot buffer.
Okay, I mixed up the two boundaries. Thank you.
Anything else, Mike?
Just a follow-up to that, is the setback the buffer, that's a no disturbance buffer, correct?
Under our ordinance script.
And then, so is there any marking or demarcation needed so that there's no lay-down area used by the construction company during that time?
That's certainly something the board could request as being put on notes in the plan. However, it ultimately is going to, it's going to lie within the observation of construction that takes place in the building department during the construction process. That's really the only mechanism we have to enforce that.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the suggestions I would have would be, it's often commonplace, is just to use the orange construction fence as a marker, so that all trades know where that line is, and so that there isn't damage to that buffer. So I would make that suggestion, that we either had that notice part of erosion control or some sort of construction requirement.
Would you find it satisfactory to put in the notice of approval from the planning board, or do you want it to be a note on the plan to do something like that? I mean, I get what you're after, I'm just trying to figure out what's the best way to pin it down?
My recommendation would be that be made a general condition of the approval, that's not something that needs a plan revision, but is something that goes to the applicant and to the building departments, that they're both on notice, that is something that's required by the board.
I would be fine with that.
We...
Other comments? Oh, please.
We also met with the Conservation Commission last night, and they had no issues with the plan as well. We discussed the buffer a little bit there, I don't know if they forwarded their comments to you or not.
They usually do, but I hadn't seen them yet. Let's check and see.
Yeah, there should have been an email from Chairman Tenhave late last night, that you should have been copied on. My recollection is that there was some discussion amongst the members of the commission, however, given the fact that it was a two-lot subdivision with limited impact to the resources and things they typically are concerned about, that they had no official comment.
Do we know what the character of the wetland is? Does it have any functions and values that are worth...
Yeah, it's a, as you can see, it's a fairly extensive wetland. It's a very distinct boundary. There's a, the slopes kind of go up kind of steep, because it's a sandy esker, so there's a lot of sand in that area. So they're essentially identical from what they were about 10 years ago, and it is a scrub, shrub, forested wetlands, which does have, you know, a fair amount of value as far as wildlife habitat and treatment of stormwater and...
Other comments or questions by the board? Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim, just a quick question. Where the proposed driveway is, appears to be running perpendicular to the slope, it's almost like running against the grain of the slope, and where the proposed foundation is being proposed, do we have any, I read your memos, I didn't see any concern raised about the slopage going into the proposed location?
No, typically, there doesn't appear to be anything that's non-compliant from a slope perspective in terms of the regulations, that either our department or Public Works picked up on through our review of the plans at this point. However, we'll certainly be keeping an eye on that during the driveway permitting, the right-of-way permit that goes through this process.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
See, I could comment a little bit on that.
Go ahead, I'm...
The slopes, actually, it does kind of appear that way, it's running actually along a ridge line, so it kind of follows the ridge line, and it kind of follows the contours as it goes up and climbs gently to the top of the hill. So, like I said, it's kind of a spine of the ridge, which it's following, so it kind of looks like it's going against the grain, it is climbing, but it's not, you know, like going straight up, so...
Appreciate the clarity, thank you. Thank you for that. Does the board like to take up waivers, or do you want to hear some public opinion first?
Public comment?
Let's go with some public comment.
Go for the public, let the public have their say.
Any members of the public or butters wish to weigh in off the board, anything to consider before we take up some waivers? Please come forward, sir. Come forward. You can use the microphone, if you'd like to sit down, you certainly can, whatever you'd like. But do sign in.
My name's Derek Muse, I live at 3 Vandenhoe Road. And the size of this parcel is 15 and 1/2 acres. And I guess my concern here is that at some point in the future, somebody wants to subdivide it again. There's probably 75% wetlands there. Is this a possibility in the future of subdividing it?
You know, an applicant can always come forward and ask to subdivide it, but I could tell you, with that much wetlands and little accessibility, it seems very unlikely they'd come up with any kind of an engineering design that would make that property usable. So if they quote subdivided it, I doubt that they would waste their time trying to get the planning board to approve it, since it would be meaningless lines on a paper that you never could actually build with on the ground.
I would strongly doubt that the DES, the state DES, would approve a wetland permit for any additional development on that lot.
Yeah, I agree with that. So it's the regulations that you get with that. I don't think that it would be something to turn on.
Okay, as far as the value goes, there are a lot of wildlife in that area that could be affected if we go any further out with that. I don't know what the proposed backyard and stuff like that would be, but I would assume they would stay within the, out of the wetland area.
Absolutely.
I can give you a little bit of help on that. From a planning board standpoint, when we do a subdivision, as you kind of heard, the choice of where the house site is, is kind of advisory, and the applicant has a way to move it around a little bit. But does have to stay within both the setbacks from the wetlands, the no disturb buffer, and the side lot and front lot setbacks that are all there. And so that means that 25 feet from the wetland is an absolute no disturb buffer, and 40 feet is a no building construction buffer from the wetland. I don't know what the side lot and front lot setbacks are from there, but they're going to be essentially subsumed within that same...
30 foot, Mr. Chairman.
There you go.
Thank you. One other question, I don't know if this is within the realm of this arena here, but utility, utilities for these electrical, on your sketch, would that come in? Should we have overhead wires? Where would they come in on your...
They would come in along the driveway.
So along the driveway from Turkey Hill Road?
Yeah.
Okay, that, I'm okay with that. That's, not that I have to be, but I thought they were coming in off Summit Road, which they are not.
PSNH does not really care for running cross-country with their wires, so it's pretty much always has to go up a driveway or some type of dedicated easement.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Ever source.
Are there any other butters or citizens who wish to weigh in on this application? Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing, and let's take up the applicant's request for either a waiver of the sidewalk provision, or a decision that the sidewalk is not necessary because it's a minor subdivision. And the latter being our usual course of action.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that because it is a minor subdivision, there is no need for a waiver for the sidewalk.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Boyd. Nelson, you're making a comment, or are you just trying to get a motion in there?
No, I was just going to do it, but you got good help.
All right, sounds good. So it's a motion by Alistair, second by Mr. Boyd. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 to determine that a sidewalk waiver is not necessary for this. And with that, unless the board has some more discussion with the applicant or among board members, we are at the point of making final action.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant final approval for the subdivision, as outlined, together with the additional comment that made by Michael for the control of the wetlands marker out, whatever the right words are, but that additional...
As a general...
As a general condition to be added to the rest of the paperwork.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Boyd. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0, so you are all approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is item number four on our agenda, which is Joseph Mitchell Esquire as the applicant, and Nicholas Delamis as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of a waiver of full site plan review to convert a single-family residence to a multifamily residence, the parcels located at 565 DW Highway in the C1 Limited Commercial, Aquifer Conservation District, elderly housing overlay districts, and wellhead protection area, it is Tax Map 6D-1, Lot 123. And my notes say that the applicant has requested a continuance to our first August meeting, which is 7th.
That's correct. It's August 2nd.
2nd.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the request of the applicant to move this item to the August 2nd meeting at 7:00 PM in this room with no further notice to any others.
Seconded.
Moved by Alistair, second by Mr. Boyd, to continue it to August 2nd. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7-0-0 to continue that one. That brings us to item five on our agenda, which is Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, care of McLean Middleton PA as the applicant, and Merrimack Village District as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of a site plan to construct a telecommunications tower, the parcels located off Turkey Hill Road in the R Residential District, Tax Map 5C Lot 4.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to recuse myself for items five and six of this board meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Being that he's town council rep, and we've already used our alternates anyway, no need to have him substitute. My notes say that Jillian is introducing this one for us. What do you got for us, Jillian?
This proposal is for a property currently the site of a water tank owned by Merrimack Village District. They're proposing a 100-foot-high monopine tower, which will be camouflaged as a pine tree, housed within the fenced perimeter of the property. And the petitioner was granted a special exception for the proposed telecommunications tower within the R Residential District at the May 25th, 2016 zoning board of adjustment meeting. You're here with site plan for review, and I do note that they are requesting a lesser setback per the ordinance, as they intend to meet applicable building codes and submit the certified and stamped building construction plans to the building inspector, as well as review by a structural engineer designated by the town. And in addition, there are several waivers that they are requesting as well.
Thank you for that. So I see you've settled in, please sign in on the clipboard, and then when you're prepared, please introduce yourself and tell us what...
Thank you, I've signed in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. For the record, my name is Victor Minougy, I'm with the McLean Middleton Law Firm. Tonight I have with me, in the second row, to my left, your right, Josh Lanzetta and Tyler Haynes, they're colleagues that worked on this project, and in the row in front of them, I have Derek Creaser, immediately to my left, who is the engineer from the A&amp;E firm that prepared the drawings, as well as the structural letter. Next to him is Brian Ross, and Brian Ross is the Structure Consulting Group representative on behalf of Verizon that finds the sites for Verizon. And lastly, in the back row to the left is Andrew Lemay, Andrew prepared the appraisal report, and if we need testimony from them, they'll all be willing to come up. We're proposing to build, as was mentioned, 100-foot monopine cell tower. It's going to have 12 panel antennas, four per sector, nine radio remote heads, and one junction box. We received Ms. Harris's review of the project, and we have already taken care of her recommendations with respect to number 11, specific references that she wanted on the plan. We've actually done that... We will be requesting five waivers. First one is for parking. The second one is for setback for the tower. The third one is for soil types and location of soil boundaries. The fourth is for storm water drainage plan and engineering calculations. And the fifth one is for a landscape plan, and we'll get into that for testimony. But we do have the structural letter to show that if the tower does, in a worst-case category storm, topple over, it will topple over on itself, so it will stay mostly on the property because it would be fifty feet. But in the worst-case scenario, that's what will happen. And I do have the drawings on the screen. When the board is ready, I'll go through the plans page by page.
Please proceed.
I'm going to start with C three because that shows the tower and the location of it, as well as the distances. So, what we've done is we've drawn a dotted line circle, which would be the full hundred feet from the center of the tower. Under your ordinance, your ordinance says that it should be the height of the tower. Here, we don't have it. Unfortunately, the lot is small and we leased up with the water division, and we don't have the room to comply with that. So, we're asking for a waiver on the setback for the fall zones. If it were to fall, it would fall on property that's not buildable right now. It's part of two other properties, one which grants the easement to the town and us, and the other parcel a little to the left. So, worst-case scenario, if it does fall, it'll bend over fifty percent of its height. This is a depiction of the monopine. We do have better color photos that Derek has that we can distribute, but it will be a one-hundred-foot monopine. I generally don't like monopines unless they work in the setting, and in this setting they work. As we submitted photo sims in your package that were reviewed also by the zoning board, when you stand back from a distance and look at the monopine, it blends into the natural tree line. It's a staggered tree line, so in this case it works really well to blend in with the natural scenery. So, the tower will have the antennas on it, and at the base, we have the equipment, which in the old days, until the first day of the year, we used to put big twelve-by-twenty-six equipment buildings or shelters. We've changed that now. We've gotten smaller. So, we pour a ten-by-twelve concrete pad, and the equipment sits on that pad. It's a lot more compact, less obstrusive to the eye, and it will be shielded with a fence, et cetera. And that's your typical design now, much smaller, much sleeker, hopefully less visible. And on sheet C two shows exactly where we'll access from Turkey Hill Road up to the complex where the current gate is. And we're also asking for a parking waiver, probably similar to the visits the water tank gets. We'll make two visits a month at most for checking the equipment. It's a small pickup truck that comes to check the equipment. There's no heavy traffic, so we won't need extra parking spaces, and it's unmanned, so that's another reason that we usually say we don't need any parking spaces. That's the gist of our install. I'll gladly take any questions from the board.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions by members of the board? Mike?
Two questions. One, can you describe just some of the impact or the space needed to construct it? It would seem to me that one of the challenges would be, with a small site like this, would be accessing it with all the equipment needed to erect the tower. And is there a need to open up space? Is there, you know, what potential is there for erosion? There's a brook nearby. There's a steep slope. Just trying to understand what precautions you take to prevent damages to property as well as nearby resources.
I'm going to have Derek.
All right, great. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Derek Creaser. I am an engineer. I work for Hudson Design Group out of North Annover, Massachusetts. To answer your first question, typically a tower of this size would need about a twenty-five by twenty-five-foot mat foundation. So, you're looking at a square feet of about twenty-five by twenty-five plus the ten by sixteen for the equipment area. So, you're looking in the realm of two, three hundred square feet that would be disturbed, excavated, foundation poured, and then backfilled back in. In this particular case, we have a little bit of slope near the base of the tower. We are looking to level that out. We have a three-foot retaining wall to bring that level so we can put our equipment next to the tower on a level concrete pad surface. At that point, we will reseed, regrass everything, so there should be no increased runoff, no increased stormwater as a result of.
Then to actually erect the tower, does that come in segments or is it in small pieces so that you don't need to bring a crane in, or how does that work?
It will be craned in. It comes in segments. This particular one would likely be two fifty-foot segments. And yeah, it comes in on a flatbed. They bring that in, and it has, and they will have a crane on site, and they will crane it in. Typically, the installation of the tower after the foundation has been backfilled is literally one day, and then all the appurtenances come in after the fact.
An access that needs to be provided for that equipment can be achieved with the existing driveway in the proposed area that you just described?
Yeah. So, the way we're proposing, I believe, is a twenty-five-foot-wide access easement. I've seen some pictures and noted that that road is about twelve feet wide. At that point, you know, the trucks can get in. Likely one vehicle will pull in. The crane would pull in first and be next to the water tank, and then the second vehicle would pull in on the access road itself or the access easement and pick the tower components itself.
Okay, great. I had one other question. Yes, please. Mike?
Your depiction of the profile of the equipment on A2 proposes a polar diesel generator. Can you describe its capacity and what containments it has to prevent leakage?
It has a double-walled diesel tank at the base. In some instances, we can actually add additional containment tray, per se, that if there was concern that the double-wall tank were at a puncture of some sort, we can add a containment unit around it also. Typically, we don't do that. It's very unlikely that it would be punctured by anything that happens on this site.
Right.
It's a fairly small generator, kilowatt twenty-three KW. Pretty small.
With like a hundred gallons of fuel or something, or something to that?
Yeah, less than that. Fifty, I believe.
Less than that, okay.
And it's not our typical generators that you may have seen in planning board hearings of the past, where Victor had mentioned a twelve-by-thirty-six shelter with a fifty-KW generator. This, Verizon has really compressed their equipment down to much smaller needs. Much of the radio equipment is up actually on the tower, and it's out. Everything down at the base is more of DC power, and the generator is, it's about three feet by three feet, sticks up about four feet. It's not a, it's more like a home generator.
Okay. So, as far as noise and that sort of thing, it's very minimal, I would assume, right?
Specifically chosen for its being quiet, fifty-five dB? Very, very quiet.
Yeah, generally fifty-five dB.
Older generators of the past were in the eighty, seventy, seventy dB. They were pretty loud, but you're talking a generator three, four times bigger than this.
Okay. It's a backup generator for power failures, or is this the thing that's going to run the power all the time?
Only power failures, but it does run on its own, likely once a week, twenty minutes. Very typical.
One other question. I might have three. So, Victor, you had mentioned that during a catastrophic event where the tower might collapse, it would likely break in half, which would mean fifty feet of its length would then fall in some direction. With it being thirty-three feet from the distance to the tank, what concerns or guards, safeguards have you put in place to prevent any impact to the water tank in the event it falls in that direction?
Well, typically, we don't design it to fall. We design it to comply with the hurricane wind speeds, the current required hurricane wind speeds. We wouldn't look at this as protecting the tank, but designing the tower to withstand what's required in the building codes today. I can't, I wouldn't be able to describe what could happen to the tank. I mean, the forces that you would be speaking of would be, depending on the wind and where it broke and how much weight was at the top. It's really not an answerable question to say, but to more say that we're designing this to the current TIA tower codes today, if in fact it sees a wind speed, there will be a lot more damage than just the tower falling down if it sees a wind speed much greater than the code windspeeds today.
What wind speed are you talking about for your design standards?
Ninety miles per hour, which is Hillsborough required by, and that's pulled in from the National Tower Code, which is the TIA two-two-two G, which is the current one, and they pull their wind speeds from the ASE required wind speeds, which are updated. So, the tower code is amended in 2014, so it pulls in the wind speeds from 2010.
Do you have any thoughts, Mike?
I do, yeah. So, I guess, follow me down my rabbit hole, and then you tell me if I need to change my thinking, okay? So, here's my thoughts, is that if, according to Victor, it would fail potentially at fifty feet in height and fall in some direction. There is a scenario that it could fall towards the tank.
Agreed.
If it falls towards the tank, could there be an impact that could compromise the structural capability of that tank?
Possibly.
Okay. All right. So, I guess, I guess, follow me down my rabbit hole, and then you tell me if I need to change my thinking, okay? So, here's my thoughts, is that if, according to Victor, it would fail potentially at fifty feet in height and fall in some direction. There is a scenario that it could fall towards the tank.
Agreed.
If it falls towards the tank, could there be an impact that could compromise the structural capability of that tank?
Possibly.
Okay. All right. So, I guess that's where my concern would be, is that I'd like to understand what that scenario probability would be, if there should be safeguards for that, and certainly if MVD has any concerns with that and/or finds a need to put any safeguards in place. That would be a question that I'd have at this point, not necessarily a concern.
Okay. If I can follow up a little bit on that, Mike. At those wind speeds, I think we'd be seeing damage to that water tower regardless of what happens to the cell tower. The cell tower is probably going to be designed to withstand more wind and more stresses than I think that water tank will, given the age of the tank versus the standards that are being used for the cell tower that are proposed here tonight. Additionally, in terms of MVD's concerns and requirements, they're the ones that have negotiated the agreement and the lease agreement with Verizon to utilize this site, and so I'm assuming that they have put in all the safety provisions they feel comfortable with to ensure that their asset is protected.
This is a note. We do install towers in, you know, in the cities. It's not very common, but they are in people's backyards. It's not uncommon to have no fall zones for towers that are in more populated areas.
As somebody who spent the better part of my, younger part of my career writing model ordinances for cell towers, the fall zone concept really is an outdated idea in cell tower ordinances and something that I believe that we as a community and other communities should be taking a look at because it really doesn't serve the purpose that it was intended to back in the late 1990s.
Okay, so then, all right, so you see where I'm, where a couple of different arguments here are going. So, give me data that will help change my paradigm that I kind of started down the road that there's a fifty-foot fall. Is there data that shows that of all the towers that have been installed, there's been no scenario that is what I just described?
It's funny, I was looking that up on the internet on the way, before I came here. Much of the towers that failed, that were monopoles, so when we speak of towers and when you talk of fall zones, that was more geared towards larger guy towers that were built fifty-plus years ago, SSTs that were built post-war. There was a lot of fall zone issues with that. There was maintenance issues, different ways to design. They didn't have the analysis systems and computer systems that we have nowadays to design those. We don't typically design with fall zones in mind now because we are actually designing greater-than-wind speeds than what structures are standing there now.
Okay.
So, that structure, you know, I could hazard a guess that the water tank is at least twenty years old, maybe more, so it's not designed to the same wind, ice, earthquake, all the loads that it is, that the tower now sees under the computer programs and under the different directions that are required. So, it's likely that the trees are going to fall down, and lots of things will impact, and then very possibly that, you know, there could be damage to the water tank, too. So, to say that the tower will be the damaging, the cause of the damage is very unlikely because of the fact that it's built to the most current wind speeds.
Okay, thank you.
If I can just add two quick points. As Tim mentioned, I usually have an engineer speak at this type of question, and the response is usually what Tim said, there's nothing left. It'll be devastation if that tower's going down. So, tanks, buildings, that's how strong the storm would have to be. And as a fall drop, this doesn't prevent what you're thinking about, but our lease with the Merrimack Village District obviously has us completely responsible to fix any damage to the water tower. So, if anything comes off the tower and hits the tank, causes damage, or something even worse case that we don't see happening with the current codes, but we are responsible for that, and we would own up and immediately repair it.
Yeah, my concern would be that the probability of that, the scenario occurring is very little, which it sounds like it is. And two, that, and if it wasn't, then what would be the repercussions of damage to that tank? Could there be a catastrophic release, or could there just be leaks, or what? But it sounds like we don't even need to go down that road, knowing that your design and the current statistics show that the current design and the current systems are very robust and would handle the both.
There's been a significant increase in the safety and, I'd say, sturdiness to these towers over the course since the Telecommunications Act of ninety-six. If you go back to the late nineties and early two thousands, we were seeing a lot of lattice-style towers, not these monopoles that are designed to handle these types of stresses in a much better way than the older towers did.
Great, thank you. If I may, too, so the tower will be built with a capacity. Obviously, you know, it's built with safety factors, and it's compounding safety factors starting from the soil, two-time safety factor for the foundation, and then safety factors within the steel itself. So, they all kind of compound themselves, but when the tower manufacturer designs this tower for Verizon, they give it a capacity, and so we'll call it a hundred percent rating. If you're at a hundred percent, you're at its capacity of what the wind speed is, right? They will give it more capacity because Verizon will want to make changes over the years. Possible another carrier will want to co-locate lower on there, will add wind. So, typically, the tower will be sent out, and Verizon will put its loading on there, and you're looking, the day it gets installed and it's on air, it's only in the fifty to sixty percent of its capacity. So, now you have all those compounding factors of safety, plus you're not even using it all, all of the capacity of the tower. Now, of course, more carriers come in, you bring that closer to one hundred, but new codes will change. And every time that next carrier shows up, we will actually be using the next code, so we'll be using H when that's released in 2017 thereabouts. So, now we're running to a later code, higher wind speeds, or more dynamic analysis is what will be the next one. And I also know that monopole failures were typically at the base plate. We kind of learned a lot in the last twenty years about how to design monopoles, and they sheared at the base plate, and we found out that it was a welding, a maintenance issue if the weld at the base plate wasn't maintained over years and got a little bit rusty. There was a potential that that was a failure point when it hit those very high wind speeds. Nowadays, and from what I'm hearing in the new code, gusset plates will be required. Gusset plates are always installed around monopoles now, so that shearing at the base makes it near impossible to break, and that's why we get more of a yielding of the steel up, upper in the shaft.
Great.
Great, thank you. I'll pause any questions I have at this point, let others ask.
That's right, I was seeing you waving a hand over there a little before. Did you hear your question answered already?
He was asking the ones that were going down the line that was in my head, so I'm good.
Could I just ask a question? I share your view, sir, that these monopines are hideous-looking pieces of equipment. I mean, I can think of three or four that are not too far away from here, and I think each of them, I mean, they look stupid. That's the word I would use. I wonder, did you, given that you've got a water tower there, do you really think a conventional monopole, not a monopine, would really look different? I mean, I think it would look more sensible, it looked more part of the construction, but I'm not going to tell you what to do, it's your technology, but I think monopines look awful.
I didn't mean to draw attention to myself with my opinion like that.
You're welcome, sir. If you hadn't brought it up, I was going to bring it up anyway.
I generally feel the same way you do, but in this case, especially when you're not right there, when you're driving around, the monopine will blend into the scenery better. But having said that, you're the board. If you want, you don't want a monopine, we will do a monopole without the branches. We'll paint it any color you want. We always do whatever a board wants, but we felt it would blend in, in this setting, better from the surrounding neighborhoods.
I can, I can think of three or four other settings where somebody must have said the same thing, and then none of them have they blended in at all. I mean, there's one at Loudon, there's one on the Hollis-Nashua border, and there's another one in the Bedford area, anyway.
Well, no, I agree, and I just told my colleagues, I went to Philadelphia for my nephew's wedding 4th of July, and on the New Jersey Turnpike, I took a picture of a 140-foot monopine where the closest tree was only 20-foot tall. So that's where it doesn't work.
That's where I am. You see, that's where I'm getting at. They look out of place, because they're so much taller than the tree line.
Part of it is the height, and part of it is it looks about as much like a pine tree as my pickup truck does. And that part I don't understand, because making something to look like a tree is pretty well-developed technology, it's really not that hard. One of my Christmas tree, Sears has got a whole bunch of them that look like pine trees. But which one looks less offensive in the environment, the thing that looks like a bottle brush, or one with no branches on it? I don't know. It's a coin flip, for me.
Do we have a sense of what the views would be like?
Yeah.
Can I pass around a sample of 105-foot monopine?
Yeah, you don't have to. I just think, when you look at the, and I don't think it's your pole, but it's the pole that was put up, the monopole that was put up near Home Depot, on the Home Depot pad, if you like, in Merrimack. I honestly think that looks neater, more concise, a better piece of, it looks more like a piece of equipment than...
That's not a tree.
I know it's probably not your pole, but it's a monopole, it looks beautiful, in my book.
I think when you're at 150 and 180 feet, and you're substantially above the tree line, well then you should be gray or a grayish, whatever, blue color, because that's what your backdrop is. When we're down, and assuming these white pines are typically, they can get up to 80 feet, we're at 100 feet, 105 feet, should blend better, you're only talking 25, 30 feet above the tree line.
You also got to remember that the water tower is going to be in front of this from Turkey Hill Road as well, so it's going to be behind the water tower and the tree.
The water tower is a sort of steel concrete structure.
I understand. I totally get and agree with the whole two-tall monopines looking like broils, pipe cleaners. The one in Loudon is terrible. I drive by it far too many times.
Look at the one on the Nashua-Nashua line, it's 55, the trees have come down, and the thing sticks up there.
Yeah, remember, I wrote my thesis on this topic back in 1996, 97, so I see these things in my sleep, and I have for the last 20-plus years. So, but in this, in this setting, where it's located, and the fact that it's only 100 feet tall, I think the pine's going to work here.
That's, that's my view as well, because I, I don't know, it's, it's got to be, what, 600 or 800 feet from Turkey Hill Road?
Yes.
Where it's located, and 100 feet tall. Unless you're going out there looking for it in the woods, whether it's white or gray or shaped like a bottle brush, not really going to be all that apparent to most folks, at least not to me.
And then Brian Ross just mentioned to me that the pole you're talking about is a unipole at the Home Depot, so that's, everything's contained inside, it's just a...
So you can't do that, you're going to steal the one, external antenna, eh?
We're doing external antennas.
Okay, well then our shot option.
And that helps, that helps the water district, too, because they can co-locate with more people that way.
I'll give up.
A question for you.
Any comments or questions by the board?
Yeah, I have a question. You mentioned 90 miles an hour is the maximum speed, wind speed it can take, did I hear that right?
No, it would be designed to a 90 mile per hour, 3-second gust wind speed, but that wouldn't be the maximum it could take. Again, we talked about factors of safety, carrying from the soil all the way up. To actually put a number on what it could handle, that's really a question of constructability and quality of steel, and where, I mean, you're looking at the factors that probably could not be analyzed. But yeah, it would, it would be designed for a minimum of a 90 mile an hour, 3-second gust wind speed with multiple factors of safety.
What happens in the wintertime when you get an ice cover, ice load? Is a, is a different specification in the winter?
Correct. So when they run the analyses for the tower with its impertinences, and they do run it at a, the code required 40 miles per hour with 3/4 of an inch of ice on everything. So it's a, it's a much heavier weight on the system, so it now doesn't move as easily, but we don't have hurricane winds typically when you have that icing.
Right. Now, there's no guidelines on these things, right? So all the stresses are at the base?
Yeah, it's a pole, it's a pipe.
It's a pole, right.
Absolutely. So the, the tower does taper, gets, and the sections will get thicker.
Yeah, okay.
Nelson, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. You mentioned photo sims, and I don't know if that's what you passed around, or if there was some photo.
There's a much larger packet that would have added about six pounds to your packet if we had included them in the mailing.
Which I still haven't received.
I got an extra one, you want?
We do have, the full package available in the office, and the file is here if we need anybody to look at it. But there are photo simulations from various locations, they were all part of both the packet here for this, as well as the presentation that was made to the zoning board for the special exception.
Okay. I just never got to see one, so I'll take a look at that in a minute here. A couple of other questions, if you could. I wanted to ask about accommodations for other users, additional to the user you present, your own use. Our requirement is that it accommodate at least one other user, I think, on a tower of this size.
I think it's a federal requirement as well, so...
Well, it's, I know it's our requirement, so I just wondered how they, they haven't mentioned it, and I wanted...
No, he did. He mentioned that there'd be other collocators and their equipment would come along.
Let's hear him say that.
Yeah, we, obviously, they would have to lease up with the district, but it's built to handle co-location. The foundation is built stronger to take more collocators later, so is the pole. Currently, there's probably four out there, if you, if you count Verizon as one of, one of the players. So there's three other carriers that could potentially come on, and it depends on what the carrier's needs are, whether they, what height they need, and if they need coverage in this area. But it's totally available, and we build it so that it can be added on to without having to, without having to reinforce the pole. We could add carriers below us. If they want more later, they could come back and try to extend the pole, but right now it's built to take other carriers for co-location.
Another important note on that co-location issue moving forward, as was mentioned in Julian's memo, that the state law RSA 12K has had several revisions in the last couple of years, one of which removes the ability for communities to require bonding for removal of towers unless you require bonding for removal of all other similar, not even similar, all other land uses within your community. So we can no longer enforce that requirement of the zoning ordinance. In addition, the revisions to RSA 12K provide for a much more expedited review process for co-location that actually prohibits them from having to come in front of the planning board. It's purely a building permit process, including up to, I believe, it's a certain amount of feet going up, as long as it doesn't exceed 20% of the height of the tower. There's some additional provisions that would also allow for them to potentially go up some without having to come back to the board.
Yeah, and I knew that was in our regulation as well, and I just hadn't heard any mention of it, and I wanted to be sure they were aware of it, and it sounds like they are, and I have no further issue with that. The only other thing I wanted to ask a little bit about was this construction site area. First of all, there's, I understand you're running utilities, right? Electric utility will now come up on poles, is that right, above ground, electric utility?
Correct. So we're looking to install utility poles approximately every 150 feet. Be overhead wires run to the site.
Yeah, and your easement, I'm sure, allows that. And then, then the question is, is there enough room there to really do the construction work, enough flat area? Michael brought this up, if you have enough space, do you have enough space in there to move around, get your equipment, your trailers in, and your pieces in, and...
I don't think it's...
On the property, on the property of, by staying on the property of the Merrimack Village District.
So we found that bedrock was at five feet below grade, so we're not looking at large excavator here to make a massive excavation and do, do lots and lots of groundwork. We're probably looking at a very small foundation that will be pinned into this bedrock, which will make the, the amount of disturbance less. I will note that the foundation hasn't been designed yet, we've only done the geotechnical analysis, but the rock quality was very good. It was from 70% to 95%, which is a very high rock quality. So it's better we use that rock rather than try to, try to rip it or hammer it or anything like that. So the, what I'm getting at is that you're not looking at large construction here, massive excavators, you might have one of those mini excavators excavating the foundation. It's not, it's not as intrusive, I think, as you might think. You're looking at more like, maybe at worst case, a small house, you know, like something like that. It's not, you know, you're not building a massive foundation for some sort of...
You're building inside this fence, I guess, and you're staying inside the fence, is that...
Well, we'll be staying on the property, that's for sure.
Which is the fence?
We do have some, right? We do have some regrading that gets away, but that will all be on the property. We have about 50 feet, I would say, of clearance from the tank into that corner area. You're only talking one excavator and a couple pickup trucks for these guys to be working.
Didn't the fence cut that corner off?
It looks like it did when the thing was built, but when the tower gets built, but at the beginning.
Well, it looks like, if you look at page C2. And page A1 also. It cuts off, the corner is cut off.
They're proposing a retaining wall there, too, so...
Yeah.
We do have...
Okay, I just wanted to think about it, you know, you're working in tight quarters here.
It's certainly, 50 feet is, you know, like I said, they do these in the back of small parking lots, in back of fire stations where you have no clearances. It's common. And because this tower will be anchored to bedrock, and it's a smaller tower, you're not looking at a very, very large excavation. Some of these bigger towers, 180-foot monopoles, they'll, they require up to 40-foot by 40-foot foundations, we're nowhere in the, nowhere in that realm.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Nelson. Any other questions by members of the board? Would the board like to take public opinion, or consider the waivers that the applicant asked for first?
You haven't accepted it yet.
Thank you, Tim. What's the will of the board with respect to accepting the application as complete and ready for review?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept that this is complete and ready for consideration by the planning board.
Second for Alistair's motion?
Second.
Nelson got the second this time. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? It is 6-0-0 because of Mr. Boyd's recusal. So the application's been accepted. Now, would you like to take up waivers or hear from the public? Public, hear a vote for the public. Are there butters or citizens who wish to weigh in and offer the board some opinion on the installation of this cell tower before the board considers any other further action? Nobody's interested in coming forward? Going once, going twice? We will close the public hearing? What's the will of the board with respect to the proposed waivers the applicant has requested? Can you refresh my memory? It was a landscape waiver, the setback waiver for the fall zone.
Parking.
Got you.
Stormwater drainage plan and calcs and soil types. So there were five.
Five.
I noted more than five in my memo.
Yeah, I got seven. Parking, soil types, stormwater drainage, engineering, calcs, topography, landscape area, and sidewalk.
I, I'm sorry, I lumped in stormwater drainage with the engineering calcs, so, yeah.
So you don't want to build a sidewalk out there?
I don't think it applies.
Technically, if you really want to be sticklers for the regulations, there's no frontage for this park.
Yeah.
There is no requirement for a sidewalk where you have no frontage.
I would agree with him.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we grant all, 1 through 7, 7 waivers. It's obvious that I don't think there's anything that we should be worried about. I think we've heard a very professional presentation, and I think we should be able to trust the work that's going to be done to put this tower up. Yeah, the, the, oh, God. Specific circumstances related to submission or condition of land in the waivers, the waivers will carry out the spirit in turn of all the regulations.
Second for Alistair's motion to grant all the requested waivers by Mr. Sebring. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0. What's the will of the board, Mike?
I just have one question for the applicants. Can you just provide a quick little summary as to benefits to the community with regards to the tower and/or the MVD?
Sure. That was covered in our, the RF report that was submitted to the zoning board of adjustment, but there's significant gaps in Merrimack in this area that this will address. It will also enhance the, the public safety use of the cell tower for communications. It will help the residents and the businesses get better signal, but there is a significant gap. You have towers around here, and if you look at the RF report, it shows the gapped areas and where the gaps are, and that's what this is intended to do. The RF report had a significant area in the center that was not covered, and once this tower is online, that will fill in the gaps of coverage, and it will offload some of the demand off the other surrounding towers, so they will give better service to the customers as well, as well as increasing the service here.
Just a follow-up, if you don't mind, Mike, on that. Is that primarily a voice gap or is it a data gap?
It's, it's more of a data gap than capacity. Not that many people care about how many bars they have anymore, it's more capacity and how fast you can get your phone. I know when I'm driving, I'm not looking at it, because I'm not allowed to, but I have at least three apps open, so everybody has a bunch of apps open and...
Just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Yeah, it's mostly the capacity for data now, that's the huge demand.
So your package that you submitted has these maps, which I'm looking at, and I think Mike's got some, too. And they show, you know, before there's areas of white, and after there's areas that are all colored in. But I've got two sets that are basically green, and two, two maps that are yellow and red, and one of them is called sector footprints, and one of them's just LTE coverage. What is a sector footprint, and what is that? Tell me the difference in these.
Was there more that came with these maps? Because there was no explanation.
No, there's no explanation.
There was more, and it was noted that there was more.
It was noted that there was more. Yeah. Okay, for more information, okay.
Would it help if I let you borrow my map? I got extra ones.
No, I just got to it.
I got the maps, but...
Yeah, that's what I mean. And I'm sure the answer's satisfactory, I just haven't, don't know what it is, so...
All right, so I'll walk, if you walk me through, there's attachment A, B, you want to look at A and B first, the first two?
Yes, please.
So that's the, the white area around the proposed Merrimack 7 is where there currently isn't coverage for 700 LTE. It's, the other coverage is less than negative 9.5, 95. And then if you flip the page, once the tower is online, you see all the greens, so that's going to cure the gaps for the 700 LTE.
That makes a lot of sense to me. I just have one question on those two maps. Over on the left margin, there's a tower in Amherst, which seems to not cover much more than its own footprint. What's going on with that?
You want to talk about that?
Why does that tower not provide any kind of useful coverage on this map?
Based on the fact that it says 71 feet, I'd say it's the height.
Yeah. That's, that's a question for our RF guy who's not here tonight, but I don't know the answer to that.
My guess is height and topography.
It may, it probably is even your tower.
Same thing.
Okay. So, when we get to the yellow ones, it says existing 700 megahertz LTE sector footprints at the top. So, the different words are the sector footprints. What does that mean? I'm looking at attachment C and D.
Good evening. Brian Ross, Structured Consulting Group on behalf of Verizon Wireless. So, the se, so each macro cell site has three sectors. You know, usually there's at 0, 120 and 240, just the direction that they're pointing. So, on, I believe it's attachment C, it shows that the Merrimack 2 alpha sector, because it's in red, is because it's far too overloaded and overused. So, it's just showing the current that, that's where the alpha sector is, where it's providing service. And then, when you flip to D, you, the Merrimack 7, the dark blue, is the ser, where the Merrimack 7 will be providing service to. So, all three sectors. So, what happens when, when the Merrimack 7 tower goes on air, the Merrimack 2 alpha sector becomes much smaller, so it can actually, you know, service the customers in that area. And kind of Merrimack 7 is offloading the issue that Merrimack 2 is having with the inability to provide the, enough capacity to its users.
I understand. Thank you for that explanation. So, then the last map we have in here is a terrain map. What does that tell me that I should know about?
In, in this instance, for Merrimack 7, you can see, I believe Merrimack 7, the, the ground elevation is 354 feet. And as soon as you go down to Turkey Hill Road and I, I forget the road to the left, to the west's name, but those drop off almost 150 feet. And 20 years ago, height, it was always the name of the game, and it still is to some extent. And because of the terrain and the area, we needed the height so that we could, so the RF signals could give the shadow over the, the lower areas. That's pretty much...
Okay. So, you're just showing me on this one that you picked a bit of an elevation to try to put that on?
That's correct.
And that one in Amherst that ain't doing nothing is on top of a mountain?
Yeah. It appears to be, yes. It, it also could be a site at the time that the RF report was made, that it didn't have 700 LTE antenna on it yet, so it hadn't been upgraded to 4G.
Ah, okay. That would make some sense. Okay. That helps me understand what the maps are. Any other questions by members of the board? For that, we are at the point of considering whether to take any final action. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the proposal for putting in this cell tower exactly according to the memo issued by Jillian Harris here dated 12 of July 2016, with all the conditions applied and there were waivers that we have granted this afternoon.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
A second.
Second by Desiree Fault. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So, that is 6-0-0 to grant final approval. Thank you, gentlemen, for your detailed presentation.
Sir, you could have these back if you, if you wanted. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. So, this and this.
Now, we come to the tree issues.
Ooh, nice.
Mr. Boyd, come in.
Yes, he's going to recuse here, too, as well.
Oh, okay.
I'm just trying to clear off all my paperwork so I know what I'm dealing with. Okay. Item six on our agenda is Eric C. Mitchell and Associates as the applicant and Charles Morgan as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a modification to a previously approved site plan to revise the sidewalk location and easement. The parcel's located at 526 DW Highway in the C2 Commercial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, wellhead protection area, 100-year and 500-year flood hazard areas, tax map 5D2 Lot 1. Jillian, tell me what we need to know before we hear from the applicant.
For this one, the applicant's proposing to modify the location of the sidewalk easement. This would allow for the preservation of two large trees that are located in the proposed path of the sidewalk. And the applicant's proposal would widen the easement, allow the sidewalk to meander, eliminating the need to remove those trees. Staff recommendations are in line with Public Works Department concerns that this would create the potential for tripping hazards caused by tree roots, more difficult winter maintenance brought on with the meandering of the sidewalk, and potential future connection problems to the north of the property for future sidewalks. I'll let the applicant explain a little bit further if there's the need.
Thank you, Jillian. Mr. Mitchell, once you've had a chance to settle in, tell us what's on your mind.
Sure. As was indicated, we are looking to revise the location of the easement for sidewalk and the actual construction location for that sidewalk. Based on the information that we've had from Public Works and their memo, as well as staff, we understand that the recommendation is not there to approve it. But we've done a couple of things recently to, I think, help appease the concerns. One of the questions that Public Works had was that, their concerns, was that if we are, have a sidewalk too close to the trees, that roots might grow into the sidewalk, causing triple, trip, tripping hazards or problems with ADA. As far as the soils out there, they're excessively drained. They're sand and gravels. All of the root systems that are out there are going very deep in the ground as opposed to on the surface. Plus, the sidewalk would be five to 10 feet away from any place of where the, the trees would grow. Secondly, there was concern over the meandering aspect of the sidewalk, either for snow plowing in the wintertime, if it was to be, go back and forth and be sinuous, that, that may be a problem, as well as it was suggested tying into any properties towards the north. What we've done on the plan is, the original plans that we had submitted did show a 30-foot wide easement. And that is not the easement that's necessary to do what we're trying to do, to avoid two trees that came up in staff's memo. We have some pictures of the trees and pictures of the area, which you have in another exhibit. I'd like to sow the word if we can. And the only area that we have is around the two trees next to the entrance. There's other trees that are further north, which we are still going to be in the same six-foot area that we always were in. So, it is not, the, the actual layout of the easement is only one area differing from where it was before. I realize that showing a 30-foot easement gives the ability to go anywhere you want to within the 30 feet, although it did show that. That is not our intention. So, we only plan to go outside of that in one area, and that's where there are two trees right near the entrance to our parking lot. One is a 30-inch oak tree, and next to that is an 18-inch oak tree. They're very substantial. There's also some drainage next to the road on that as well. And it's true that the location of the easement, if we put it where it was shown on the original plans, will go straight through those trees and they would have to come down. But to have the sidewalk go just behind those trees and then come back out to along the property line where it was before, I think, makes good sense. Because of the, the trees themselves, they're substantial. There is not many other trees along the frontage of the lot, and then it's not brush. These are very substantial trees. And I think that if we can accommodate Public Works by just going around those two trees and going back where the original location was, we would like to do that. And if you would like, I would pass out pictures, if that's okay?
Yes, it's okay with me. I'd love to see the pictures.
I also have some small copies. I don't know who wants big ones or small ones.
So, we're starting with the wallet size and go from there.
These are, these are, these are the briefcase size they are.
Yeah, we can share.
Well, while Eric is passing those out, I will just make note that the information that's presented on this plan is far clearer and easier for us to understand than the previously submitted wide-open, 30-foot wide easement, which raised the concerns. I think of, you know, without seeing specifically where the sidewalk was to be located, it made it difficult for Public Works to provide the appropriate comments. So, I, I certainly think this is a better solution than the plans that are in your packet. And again, I, I think it's, it's really a decision up to the board. This was not something that staff had required. This was a sidewalk that the applicant had offered during the public hearing process, after already having obtained a waiver for the sidewalk requirements. That made it into the conditions of approval, and because it was a condition specifically placed by the board, that's why we had directed Mr. Morgan that if he wanted to make specific changes, he had to come back in front of you tonight.
Thank you for the explanation, Tim, and thank you for the photographs, Mr. Mitchell. Tim, procedurally, I see that the memo says acceptance and then consideration, but...
There is no acceptance needed for this.
That's what I thought. Okay. Does the board have any questions for the applicant?
Nelson? I just have one comment. I like this a lot better. And this is certainly, certainly lays it out for us and makes it very clear. The only, my only question would be, where number five shows up on my new plan, there's a number five. The sidewalk makes a right turn and then another right, I mean, a left turn and a right turn, hard 90 degrees. I would run that as, at an angle, missing the telephone pole, of course, and, and it would make shorter, shorter path and more direct path than the path people would probably walk if they were out there.
Yes. I, I understand. The only reason why we showed it this way is that this would be acceptable. It's already striped across the entrance of the pavement, and that's where the striping on the driveway is already there. So, that would have to be covered up and restriped to go straight to where the, the 90-degree bend is. But that is something that is, is possible.
Mr., could I add to Mr. Disco's comments that, in fact, those two 90-degree bends will be, prove very difficult for the town's snow-blowing machine, which is, doesn't, wouldn't like that sort of, it would much prefer, and even for the people, for a lady pushing a stroller with a kid in it, I think those 90-degree bends are wrong. I think you've got to do, you have to redo your striping, and it should be a nice gradual slope so the operator of that machine has a nice, easy job. You're making his life miserable with those two 90-degree bends.
Well, I'm, I'm in agreement with respect to the snowplow. With respect to the people walking there with a stroller, they're just going to cut the corner. I mean, they're going to walk where they want to walk. The striping don't mean nothing to them, but I think it does for the snowplow, so. I can kind of, I can kind of support that. I think that this presentation is worthy of having a compliment, because with the color photographs on the same page and a kind of focus on this area and the red area, it makes it so easy to understand what you've got going on. I really appreciate doing that. This is...
With a compliment, there's also an apology for not having this submitted to you initially. I apologize for that.
No worries. Does the board have any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah. Just so, your, the pictures you have, the trees here, I can't see the tops. Can I assume that there's no dead branches at the very top, which might show diseases?
Correct. I looked at both of those today, and the crowns are very good on those trees.
Yeah. Yeah.
They're nice trees.
Yeah. I got to congratulate you on doing this, as opposed to just cutting those trees down. Thank you.
Well, we had shown it geometrically just along the property line along the front. And it's only when the owner says, well, wait a minute. I don't want to cut those trees down to put the sidewalk in. And that's when this all came up at later course. We didn't. It's not something that we had located in the very beginning. But the trees are significant. And also, in terms of the walkway, it's something that is, will be put in and used. I'm not sure when the, the town would be doing snow plowing, if they would plow it now or next year.
I think that's in the future if we have connections to...
10 years or whatever. So, the easement itself, even though right now we're going around the trees, it still goes right out to the right of way. So, if those trees in the future, whether it's 10, 15, 20 years, if something, if they were to die, or the east, the sidewalk could be continued straight along where the trees are.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. If there's no more questions from members of the board, are there any butters or citizens who wish to weigh in with respect to this proposed modification of the sidewalk plan? Come on forward.
Phil Routhaus, 14 Kidbridge Lane. I appreciate it if the trees would stay. I think that, sitting with Nelson on the Town Center Committee, there's always a desire to try and enhance what is kind of part of our town center, the northern end, I suppose. So, if that, if that could be made to work, I'd appreciate it. I know I had received a call from the applicant with his concerns of not being able to get an administrative allowance to do it. And I, with my minimal knowledge, explained to him that because it showed on the plan, that was from his engineer, and he had to deal with that. So, his coming forward with this, if you can see in favor of allowing those trees to stay and modifying the sidewalk with the curve instead of the 90 degree, I, I think it will be a benefit to the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Routhaus. Any other butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Please come forward. Yeah, Finley, you forgot the clipboard.
Good evening. My name is Bob McCabe. I live at Wilson Hill Road in Merrimack. I'm also the market manager of the Farmers Market. We're there on that tarmac every Wednesday through October. We would like to see the trees stay also, because it has a cooling factor. It has shade, which helps us for parking, keeping the vendors cooled, the chilled. I don't really see any reason to remove those trees. As a licensed arborist for over 40 years, they are in really good shape. They provide, as I said, the cooling effect. They provide chlorophyll to cleanse the highway of the, of the smoke and the smog. It would be a benefit to all of us to save those trees. The lot, the land needs those trees there, and I would certainly encourage the board to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other members of the public who wish to weigh in? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's the will of the board with respect to final action on the proposed sidewalk amendment to the previously approved site plan to fix up the sidewalk?
I, I do note that Jillian did provide you with some conditions of approval, should you decide to approve it. And looking at Eric's plans, I think that we still need to clean up a couple of things. We wouldn't be able to include the pictures and whatnot, but I think this can be the basis for meeting the conditions as outlined in Jillian's memo.
So, in your view, with subject to a couple of things...
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to include the pictures and things like that, because this is going to need to be recorded as the new easement plan, so.
In order to be able to take final action tonight, should we just keep Jillian's conditions in there, knowing that the applicant's essentially already met them or essentially will? So, that's the better way to do that, if that's the will of the board to do it? What is the will of the board with respect to final action on this proposal?
Mr. Chairman, I propose that we grant the, the amendment to the original site plan subject to the new documents which have been presented to us tonight by Mr. Mitchell, and I don't think, subject to the conditions that Jillian's memo of July the 11th, 2016.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion? Second by Mr. Sebring and then Nelson.
Okay. Yeah, the, the thing I would like, we, we're talking about changing the, this, this...
Yes.
By eliminating these two 90-degree curves, okay?
Yeah, sorry. I should have made that clear. Thank you, Mr. Disco. I should have incorporated that. I apologize.
Yeah. It's not exactly like this, yeah. Okay.
So, that's clear in the record, Tim? Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 6-0-0 to amend the site plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. 6-0-0.
If I, if I have, it'll only go in one place.
Eric, it's good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Our team got a grand champion in Brookline this weekend.
You want to keep one for the record, Bob?
We've got one.
You've got one, okay.
You've got one?
Okay. Thank you for bringing them in.
Let the record reflect it. Let the record reflect it. Mr. Boyd has rejoined the board for consideration of the next item, which is seven on our agenda. Meridian Land Services, Inc., and Northview Homes Development, Inc., and Bernstein, Scher, Sawyer, and Nelson, P.A. applicants, and Greenfield Management, LLC is the owner. Boy, that's a mouthful. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a 66-lot cluster subdivision on four lots, which are originally part of the Greenfield Farm subdivision, located on Wire Road and Whispering Pines Lane in the R1 Residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts and the 100-year flood hazard area. Tax map 7C, lots 28, 30, 40, and 40-1. Tim, please tell us what we need to know before we hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you recall, this was last in front of you for a preliminary layout discussion back on April 19th. The applicant has since made some revisions, provided the full set of required plans and information for the application for the cluster subdivision. The memo that I have for you tonight outlines the issues and comments that staff and the various boards and committees, departments have at this time. As you recall, because of previous involvement, CLD is not the peer review consultant for this particular project. The board, back on April 19th, did authorize Keach Nordstrom Associates to prepare the peer review comments for this project on behalf of the town, and they have familiarity with this project, given their role as the peer review agent for the town of Bedford, where the majority of this project in the previous phases has taken place. In conversations with Steve Keach today, he is close to finishing his comments. We do not yet have them. I expect to see them within the next day or so. So, our recommendation at this time is that the board and the applicant engage in the discussion. I believe the board could make an appropriate determination that the application is completed this time, discuss preliminarily the one waiver that came in that should have been in your information that was left for you at the table tonight, as well as the information regarding traffic that the applicant had submitted, and I've mentioned in summary in our memo. And lastly, we've also included some information for you regarding the town sewer ordinance for your reference in terms of the role and responsibility of the town council and the Public Works Department as it relates to the sewer extension that will take place and connect eventually to this particular project that we expect you may hear some comments from the public about tonight. Bottom line, is until that we have that peer review comments, we don't believe the board should take any final action on the application tonight. We'd recommend that it be continued to at least August 16th, which is the second meeting of August, to make sure that there's sufficient time for peer review comments to be received, the applicant to have a chance to review and revise the plans accordingly, and allow sufficient time for staff to review. If the board and the applicant are comfortable with a date beyond that, I'm certainly amenable to that, but I would not recommend anything earlier than August 16th for a continuance date on this.
Thank you, Tim, for that explanation. Please introduce yourself again, although you're kind of an old friend, and tell us what's on your mind.
Thank you. For the record, my name's Ken Clinton with Meridian Land Services, and I represent the long list of applicants and owners for the property. Thank you, Tim, for that very long and thorough and correct introduction. As was stated, this is now our final application for this particular project. We had been before you twice, one as a simplistic preliminary review, one with a slightly more amount of information as design review in April. And, quite frankly, not much has changed from an approach from a lotting or right-of-way standpoint since our last time here. There remains four parcels for this project. This is an exhibit I shared with you some time back, which shows Lot 7C-28, which is the largest lot. It runs along the Bedford Town Line, over to Pearson on the east, down across Riddle Brook, down past Babusuk Brook to, actually, to Babusuk Brook at Lot 7C-40, along the Brook to 7C-30, and all the way down to Wire Road, and then back up to the Town Line. Largest parcel involved. Secondly, there's a parcel in the middle, 7C-30. It's, doesn't have proper frontage from a public right-of-way, but it does have access. And there's two lots, 7C-40 here, and 7C-40-1. All told, it's about 130 acres. And I'll move into some of the approach on how we anticipate handling this project. First and foremost, what we are looking to do is do a lot in adjustment. The Swensons have their farm, the majority of their farm, house and infrastructure just north of the Bedford line off of Wire Road, or in that case, it's Wallace Road in Bedford. The Swenson own the largest piece of property involved in this, 7C-28. What we're going to do is we're going to reduce that large lot to about 7.48 acres, and that will be a standalone conventional lot, not a cluster lot, but a standalone conventional lot with individual septic proven through the test pit that we did, as well as a regular drilled well. That is separate and completely isolated from any of the cluster requirements, homeowners' association, covenants restrictions, et cetera, et cetera. That is the first step of this process, to shift that lot down to a smaller size, and Swenson will retain that. After that, the rest of the property will be consolidated. As I mentioned, there's three remaining lots at that point, and the total acreage is 124.63 acres, comprised of all of the rest of the property I described to you. In that calculation of cluster yield, as I've talked about previously, you have to remove floodplain, wetlands, steep slopes, and property that's subject to transmission easements, like we have on this property. The yield in this land becomes 66 cluster residential lots. That stayed consistent since the very beginning of our involvement. That's still what we're pursuing. The area for open space is a 50% requirement, so at 124 acres, that comes to about 62 acres of open space required. So, this sheet is our Sheet 2 in our plan set. It just shows an overall approach of the lot line adjustment parcel that Swenson will retain, and then the consolidated parcel itself. If I move forwards to the lot line adjustment parcel, just so you have a little bit better sense of how that looks, there's a few comments in the memo that pertain to this. They were asking if some of the improvements in the buildings, infrastructure, et cetera, associated with the farm and its use, if it's okay on this parcel. I believe so. They're pre-existing, non-conforming to whatever degree they may be. We're not proposing any new structures at this time. We're not proposing any changes, any buildings to be raised, anything to change, just the lot line itself. You can see, we have a test pit to prove that it's suitable for a septic system. You can see we have a proposed or potential well area with a 75-foot protective radius, well above the minimum lot requirements for area, and it is certainly enough frontage as well. So, again, that, we separated that as a single sheet, so all of the detail for a conventional lot can be shown as the early steps of this process. Before I move on to my next slide, does anybody have any questions on that?
Well, I will when we come to discuss it in detail. I just wanted to get an explanation of that Merritt, Merritt Road and how it intersects with this lot. Have we done the right thing by sort of cutting that off where we did?
Well, I mean, either Merritt Road as a paper street will intersect this private lot or open space. Its function and value, as it might considerably be extended into Merrimack, is none.
Is not.
There's no function or value of having a paper road coming out of Bedford to extend it to open space in Merrimack.
No, not unless you wanted to use it as access to this lot.
That's not the intention here.
Or whatever. It's just kind of funny to see it like that.
If I find differently prior to our next hearing...
Okay.
I'll make a revision, but I don't see it at this point.
Okay. That's the way you want it.
Much of this is left over the, some of the lot lines, proposed lot lines approaches are left over from the 2007, 2009 era subdivision plans that I had discussed in the previous meetings, that were virtually complete but not approved.
Yeah.
So, I'm left with some things that I don't entirely understand the full meaning and value for.
Okay. That's, that's what I asked.
Moving on to an overall survey exhibit, which shows some of these features, this is effectively our Sheet 2 of our plan set. However, also with it is, I've added some topography, wetland locations, just because, again, being able to show things on the screen and zoom around, zoom in, pan, is such a big tool for some of these presentations with a lot of information. It's helpful. So, this is not technically the Sheet 2 in the set, it's Sheet 2-plus. As I mentioned before, the overall road layout, lotting layout, open space layout is generally, if not almost identical to previous times, have been presented. Still public roads. There's a through road shown. Right now, we don't have road names, so we're still left with A, B, C, D, et cetera. The through road is currently identified as A, so we can talk about it. It goes from Wire Road on the west to Whispering Pine on the east, and then there are six small, short cul-de-sacs coming off that through road, same approach as we used before. Dispersed amongst those six cul-de-sacs are the 66 lots. So, without much change, this is how we presented it before. I'll touch on a couple of small things, which I'll get into a little bit more detail later. Open space lots, there are three. Again, once we exclude and, and not talk about the Swenson reduced lot at this point, because we're not talking about cluster, the first lot I want to focus on is what would be called the Pearson Road Lot, or as I identify it, 7C-40-2. This is the lot that we would like to convey directly as a gift to the town. It's eight, almost 8.8 acres, 8.79 is how we label it. This is the lot that I suggested could be ball fields if the town so chose. It's our intention, the applicant, owner's intention, to convey this as a gift with more broad use spelled out in the covenants and restrictions of the open space, which is to say, the town, as hopefully the owners of the lot, can not only use it in an open space conservation sense, but also from a recreation standpoint. If you so chose, the town could have the ball fields. Mr. Swenson was actually thinking it might be a nice idea if there was some type of community garden for those who might not have enough space in their own yard, own property, what have you. Maybe there could be a plot set up for that purpose as well. So, it's open space. It qualifies towards the overall required open space. However, its use would be within the confines of the regulation, just more broad as a lot the town could use as it so chose, not to be specific from an applicant's standpoint, more wide open. The second lot that I'll focus on is 7C-40-1. This is an open space lot on the very south side of the development. It's largely comprised of the 100-foot buffer, which, there's a space between the abutting lot lines and all of the internal new lots. It also includes land under the transmission line, also includes land that's behind lots off of Road E, lots 19 through 24, and then wraps back up to Road A. From an open space standpoint, it doesn't function in the same conservation sense or recreation sense, but technically it is open space. That lot is about 8.8 acres as well. However, because of its shape and nature, I would recommend and will pursue that it's open space for conservation to lift and be undisturbed. That remains 7C-40, the largest open space lot at about 82 and a half acres. Now, this lot really is fairly wide and diverse. There are some spaces near the road and lots that, as you can see, it's right next to Wire Road and Road A in the southeast, southwest corner. It does move up through the old pit, comes back around in between the lots. This little spur technically is open space. It's not dedicated as road or lots for residential use. So, between lots 37 wrapping around to 47, that's technically open space, however, not as function, functioning and value as a, as a conservation section. And then the open space 7C-40 would wrap right around back to Road A. In that, there's wetlands, Babusuk Brook, Riddle Brook, diverse habitat of trees and fields and whatnot. I think in that sense, where 7C-40-2, the Pearson lot, is specific that it expands into recreation with public recreational uses, 7C-40-1 is limited to just as is natural state. This 7C-40 is open space, could be a little bit of mix, where perhaps anything from Babusuk Brook north is more passive recreation, no specific trails constructed, no improvements necessarily, but the public has access to it to move about and walk in the woods, so to speak. Also, Babusuk Brook could be used for canoeing, kayaking, what have you. As you recall, I mentioned there already is an easement. When the Wire Road culvered or bridge was replaced, there is an easement for public access at this point. However, anything south of Babusuk Brook or south of the wetlands associated with that really is then getting onto the doorstep of the residential portion of this, and I could see at that point, that would be more so, again, open space, but saved in its natural state to be undisturbed. So, this is where I think the applicant and us as a consultant and the group are looking at this and saying, this is the direction we would like to go in, and does this meet what the board thinks is reasonable for this site?
Could I just quickly interrupt, Ken, to be probably rude. That open space, most of 7C-40, or at least half of it's the wrong side of the brook, if I can use the word "wrong." How the heck are people going to consider that? I mean, are they going to wade through the brook, or are you providing pedestrian bridges? You see, I think you're stretching it, because it's the wrong side of the brook.
I never thought of it as the wrong side of the brook. Interesting comment. Well, there is public access, and when I say open space for the public, I mean for the general public on the wrong side of the brook, where the residents, the homeowners, will have the full access, if you would like to look at it that way, on the south side of the brook. Public access is already, can be had along Wire Road, and once again, there's an easement and a canoe launch, if you want to, or a kayak launch right there at that location, that you can put in. So, the public can access the north side of the brook. I won't use "wrong" again. Where, it's more the homeowners that would have the open space rights to the south of it. There's no indication in the ordinance that the town can dictate the exact terms of the open space. It's a wide variety, and especially when you donate the land, there's no, there's no charge for the applicant to donate land. It can be held either as a single owner, fractional interests by all of the owners of the residential lots, or other. In this case, I look at this as three different types of areas, so we have a variety of use in open space, not just a single use. And no, there won't be any bridges constructed across the wetlands and over the brook.
I tell you, I just don't like it, because I think you're asking kids to wade through the brook. I think it's wrong.
No, I don't think he's asking kids. It's, it's the woods. It's open space. If you want to go out there, you encounter old nature.
Yeah.
Take what you get.
Well, yeah, but that's not...
That's what open space is. That's what's designed to be undisturbed. We're not making a walking trail, not a horse hill.
But the idea of cluster development is 50% of the site area is supposed to be generally available. Now, I don't think you can specify or say, well, that's the general public and that's the residents.
I don't think that's what the regulations require.
That's not what the regulations require.
All right, I'll shut up.
Undeveloped space is what's required.
I will add that I mentioned the threshold, 50% is about 62 acres. We're providing 100. That's 80% of the overall gross.
Yeah, I think the other point here is that, you know, Babusuk Brook, we've had problems with the crossings that we've had due to the flashiness of that brook, and I think that by preserving the upland area as they're proposing here, it only helps us. And these are more of the headwaters of that river, which is very important from an environmental perspective. So, I think there's some merit to it, and I think as long as there's access at different points, I think that the public can really benefit from that protection.
Are there comments or questions before?
I'm sorry.
I'm sort of thinking the way Alistair is, in that access to that property, this is an amenity that goes with this development, and access to that property should be available to the people in the development. And it isn't really, other than if you want to walk on Wire Road, and they built the bridge with not even a sidewalk on it, so, or kind of...
I don't think of it as an amenity. It's open space, which is open for, in its natural state. If you choose to encounter it, you encounter it on those terms.
Well, the idea of having the open space as a result of this kind of development was thought of as being an amenity to go with that development. I mean, generally speaking...
I get the idea, I get the idea, and an amenity like a clubhouse or playground for the kids or whatever is sort of much more developed along those same lines, but I don't think that's what the ordinance reads. I think it just reads open space.
Well, yes, but again, accessible open space. Accessible.
Accessible is not in the ordinance. And in fact, it is substantially accessible... And in fact, it is substantially accessible, not only along Wire Road, but from Road A, and then by connection, the back of what we're proposing to be the gifted lot along Pearson Road, 7C-40-2. Now, Riddle Brook is a much more small and manageable section of Brook, if you'd like. So, you could cross that perhaps too and get in there. So, I dispute the fact that that's not accessible, and I also dispute the fact that it's, that it needs to be accessible in the larger sense, in a pedestrian sense than it already is.
You know, I think, I get what Nelson and Alistair are after, and I think that if you were proposing to put some walking trails and some ways to get into the woods, and there wasn't a brook yet to cross, it would be a perfectly acceptable way to do it. But what I am defending is that what you're proposing is also another perfectly acceptable way to do it, that's got value to the people that are going to buy those houses, and the fact that there won't be any develop back there, and Bambi will walk right up to their back door, and all the great things that go on back there, plus the protection of the brook and all the rest of that stuff. And there won't be kids wandering around their backyard, and that'll have value to them as well.
Just, I wanted to read this into the record. Under item one, cluster residential development, the purpose of cluster development and to which purpose any development must adhere are the following. A, to promote the conservation of the natural environment and the development of community uses in harmony with natural features of the land. That's purpose number one.
That is correct.
I don't want to steer the conversation further off to...
No, no, let's revert to Ken.
I'll meditate on that.
All right, we'll think of that a little. Ken, what do you got for us next?
I just wanted to go over some of the specifics with another slide of the development itself, if I could. Again, this is a sheet I of our plan set, SP1. However, it's also had some additional information added, just because it's far easier to show this type of a slide. Again, we show our proposed through road, Road A. You can see, this also includes some of the grating on it. If I zoom in, you'll see on this particular slide, we have our proposed pavement, we have proposed hydrant, sewer, drainage, and some grating, et cetera. One of the big questions that I didn't have a hand along when I was here last was drainage. In this particular site, if you recall, it's fairly flat for a size, a footprint this size is very flat, but it's also sand and gravel on a plateau. That presented some problems as we tried to get the drainage to flow where we wanted it to flow, to consolidate it into treatment areas. However, we did that in conjunction with keeping enough cover over the sewers, so it was, it's a fairly solid design. What we ended up with is what AOT prefers from a drainage standpoint, is infiltration. So, as soon or as close to the area that the raindrop falls onto impervious surface, we collect it, we treat it, and it goes into an infiltration basin and gets back into the ground, and that's the focus and goal for this. In this particular design, we have three infiltration basins. One, which is on the Whispering Side sign, side of the property over here, behind Lot 33 and 34. We have another infiltration basin in between Roads C and D. It's behind Lot 37 and also behind Lot 46. And then we have a larger infiltration basin, which is actually in the current gravel and sand pit out there, which is technically in open space. When I mentioned that the open space is 100 acres, 80%, well over the threshold, it's certainly done in part that way, so we can say, if we take out and discount that, say, drainage easements will be within some of the open space, it's not going to then fall below that threshold of 50%. You can even take out the Pearson Road lot out of the calculation, and we still are exceeding. You can take out the lesser open space lot to the south end. We are still over the 50% threshold, so that's why we feel it's reasonable to have these drainage areas in here, not to mention it's on the quote-unquote "lower side" of the developed area, which where the raindrops want to go anyways. What's interesting about these areas is even Road E, which is on this, on the south side of Road A, all of that drainage is getting collected and heading over to this infiltration basin. We didn't need a separate one for Road D. Sorry, E, Road E. That's joined in combination with Road D over here. This infiltration system has a little bit of Road D and a little bit of Road C. The largest infiltration basin, again, handles the rest of it, and we're actually, instead of, one option was a wet pond, because we were concerned about the seasonal depth and the quality of materials over there. Materials had been removed over the years. The same parent materials that are across the site had been removed here. We're replacing those, and instead of a wet pond, we'll have the infiltration basin over there as well. Seasonal depths out here ranged from 54 inches in, before we bring in material in the sand pit, to over 11 feet. And we reached 11 feet because that was the depth of the machine that we're using to dig, and there was still no seasonal. So, again, we're up high on a sand plateau. So, from the AOT standpoint, we're very comfortable with all of this design, and we were waiting for the last bit of comments to come in before we submit to AOT. The combination of the quality of the soils and the way this laid out, this is the minimum amount of drainage that's necessary. I think it's a reasonable impact, and I think it overall results in a very good design. Very pleased with it. One other aspect of an open space sense that is only really shown on this particular plot, in addition to the passive access to recreation in the open space, we will have one area right here, we labeled Recreation Area, that's more maintained and prepared for a focal point, a gathering point of people in the community. It's not going to be something substantial. It'll be a grass area, perhaps with a picnic table or two, someplace for, you know, kids to gather and people to associate with each other in a more community sense. That's intended for the residents of the 66 lots and not necessarily a general public use. You may note that the access, the gravel access road, that not only enters the recreation area, but also serves as the requirement for access to this infiltration basin for town maintenance, that's under the PSNH easement. The previous plans of 2007 and 2009 also had the road going underneath the PSNH easement. They had a preliminary license agreement with PSNH to do that. When we got involved in the project and had our roads laid out, and once we understood where we had to have drainage, I contacted the same, contacted PSNH, said, here's the old plan and your old letter saying it was okay. Here's our new plan. Not only are we looking for a public road through here, but we're looking for gravel access with a drain line in this configuration, and they said that's acceptable too. And so, they said, once you have your plans substantially finalized, where we don't think they're going to change, send them the plan, and they can get ready to draft up a license agreement for that. So, that's taken care of as well. Overall, when we were here last, there was a fair amount of public input about traffic using the area roads, how that might affect people, the roads, what I call the level of service of the road, if it would drop to a point where safety would become an issue, or off-site improvements might be required. I personally, at the time, did not feel that a large traffic report was necessary, because there had been a traffic report associated with the 2007 and 2009 applications. However, the board felt differently, and certainly hearing the public's concern ultimately was warranted. So, in the packet, we did request the same traffic engineers to turn off to prepare, if you will, an update or an addendum to his previous work. His memorandum is dated June 22nd. The conclusions that we had in there were also added into the staff memo. Ultimately, although, yes, there's an increase to the area roads, logically, obviously, there is, the increase is not high enough to cause a safety concern or require off-site improvements relative to the level of service and the overall safety of the community. I hope that stands on its own. I do have that report in front of me. If you have general questions, I am not a traffic engineer, but it works enough that hopefully if you do have a question, I can try to answer it. If not, I can...
I hope you hand it out tonight, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We just got it tonight.
Yeah, thank you. And in memo, again, it's paraphrased to some degree. In conclusion, if I can find that section. Yeah, Wire Road, proposed subdivision road intersection, and Whispering Pines Lane, proposed subdivision road intersection will function adequately. With one approach lane on each leg of each intersection, auxiliary turn lanes are not necessary. I think that report stands on its own.
Yeah, my issue there was the site distance.
There was one, there's one site distance offsite that there's some tree growth that the town has not maintained, so a town, a town's current intersection has some site distance issue due to foliage growth.
There is an issue.
And that we could forward to DPW as well. During that testimony of the public, there was numerous questions, concerns about some drainage on either Brenda and/or Blair, where the sewer extension will be made. I had volunteered that I would go out and inspect those sections to see firsthand myself if I saw drainage issues. I did do that. Unfortunately, it was this past week. I had waited and waited for rain, and none came.
It was almost yesterday.
Yesterday.
And given my schedule, the only time I could go out there was last week. So, what I did view, though, was fairly clear in some areas where I could see staining, whether it was, if you can believe it, some pollen perhaps still around, some sediment, some silt. I can see rings of where bonding and puddling actually happened. I did forward, I think, four or five locations along that route to DPW, just for their information, just so they were aware that. I felt I needed to follow up with that. I did. I then forwarded it to Kyle Fox, and he acknowledged receipt. Where that ends up, I'm not sure, but at least I felt I needed to follow it through, because I did volunteer to do that. Lastly, we have a long string of review comments. Some are in the staff memo, some are not. We certainly have the Community Development Memo, which includes DPW comments, includes wastewater comments. I have fire department comments. I have MVD water comments. I was at the Merrimack Conservation Commission last night. Too soon to be able to turn around a memo for tonight. That was my second time there at the ConsCon to talk about this project. Earlier comments involved the typical concerns about how residents might have fertilizer use on their own individual properties, which we've gone over as applicant and as board several times. Well, is it appropriate to include? Is there enforcement measures? And ultimately, generally, that's not the case. One thing new that came up last night, and I'll try to paraphrase that, there was a concern about some of the lots that are adjacent to the top of the slope at the back of Roads C and D, where their proximity to the top of the slope, the wetlands of the tow slope, and then ultimately Babuuk Brook, how might they encroach into the open space, if you will, and then deposit, say, yard debris? Grass clippings, leaves, branches, et cetera, et cetera. I didn't mind personally individuals having small composting areas on their property. Agreed that they should not have those in the open space. Human nature as it is, maybe some of them would do that. I'm not sure if they'll know if they are or not. What I did agree to do is see if there's some type of best management practices. DES has a tremendous amount of pamphlets in all of the different bureaus and branches for best management practices. For instance, maintaining a septic system. Great little pamphlet on how to do that. Perhaps there's something that addresses this. I said I would take a look for it. If we can find something that's adequate, maybe insert a paragraph into the homeowners' association document. Is it perfect? Will it inform everybody? No. Will those who get informed actually follow it? Maybe not. Best thing we can do is make an effort, and so I agreed that if that's one of their comments, that I'm happy to try to make that happen. So, those comments are forthcoming.
Ken, before you switch subjects on that one, Mike, there was, some years ago, we were looking at a proposal, and you forwarded me some information about making like a compost berm as a water treatment effort, as an actual way to control runoff.
Associates.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
And so, what that was suggesting was that was a good thing to do, and obviously, this wouldn't be making a berm, but basically putting your compost between your water runoff and a brook kind of has the same function, wouldn't it? Why would that be a bad thing, I guess is my point.
The degradation of lawn cuttings will produce a lot more phosphorus and other types of nutrients that will runoff and get into the resource. So, you want to control that so that that doesn't happen. If it just spewed over the hill or into the woods uncontrolled and not contained, which I think is what we're talking about, then that could be a bad way of practice. But if they actually had it in like a confined box or something like that, and were actually trying to control it and turn it into compost, then there would likely be very minimal impacts on any resource that would be nearby.
Okay, thank you.
The erosion practice that you might be thinking of is often stump grindings. They'll take stumps and they'll grind it, but it's a coarse grind, and so pieces can't lock together and form more of a dam. It's very porous, and then there's a lot of surface for sediment and other things to get caught up on as water passes through. So, that's a common practice where, instead of seeing just another silt fence and hay bale, you could do a stump grinding berm, and it would act the same way. And then you could just disperse it on site when you're done, and it'll go back to nature.
Along, just, yeah, just along those lines, though, there's the potential issue of lawn fertilizers and chemicals getting into the brook, especially, say, those lots 51 through 47 there, you know, where they're right bordering the brook. Anything they put on their lawn is going to wind up in the brook, perhaps.
To some degree.
Hmm?
To some degree, perhaps.
Yeah.
Lastly, on my review comments, is the largest one that's outstanding. We're expecting something from Keach Nordstrom for peer review. Any day now or so? And then we'll add that to our list of other comments, and then address those with staff on a department-based list, and then we'll consolidate it into, you know, the final ones that will need to be handled. Other than that, just so everybody's aware, once again, for a project of this size, I'm happy to say again that there is no wetlands impact, there's no wetlands permit needed, no wetlands impacted whatsoever in the development of this property. Two permits are required from DES, again, AOT for drainage in particular, and then the sewer discharge permit. Even though the town has their own sewer department, the state controls sewer discharge as well, they have a second pair of eyes, set our eyes on it. And so, those are the two DES permits that are required, but nothing else. So, I'll pause there. That's really the bulk of my presentation, and I'll answer any questions the board or the public has.
Thank you, Ken, for the presentation, and I want to open it up for the board to ask questions if they have, but recognizing that step one is deciding whether we've got enough information to accept the application for review, and I'll sort of lead the board self-govern when it thinks that it's asked enough questions to be able to take that step. What questions do you have for the applicant? Seeing none, what's the will of the board with respect? Oh, I'm sorry, Bill. Go ahead, let him have it.
It's actually for Tim. Tim, I'm looking at the Pernod Company memorandum. On page seven, second to last paragraph, it reads, "Based on our experience, we find that subdivision traffic is not of sufficient magnitude to alter the prevailing level of service at the nearby intersections." I've read the memorandum now three times. Do we know what the level of service is for Wire Road and Bedford Road?
That was not done as part of this, because this was not a full-blown traffic impact analysis. This was essentially what I'd call a short form.
Right, and I read that in your memorandum. So, my question here then becomes, if they're making a statement by saying that the subdivision traffic is not of sufficient magnitude to all of the prevailing level of service in nearby intersections, how can they make that judgment without having that information in front of them?
I believe if you really push Steve Pernod, he would put a level of service on these intersections based on historic traffic volumes, and I'm going to presume that, given the amount of residential homes that are on Whispering Pine and Brenda and Wire and that area, you're probably talking about level of service A and B at those intersections, would be my guess.
I mean, they just did improvements on Wallace Road and Bedford. That's no longer a dangerous curve. It's now, it's gone from Watkins Glen to Talladega, as I would probably be inclined to call it. So, now, a lot of people traffic, travel on those particular, it's people coming down off of Bedford Road. They either make the right to go down to Y to go on to Senate Tower, or they're headed to the turnpike. I really think a full analysis is needed, only because of the level of traffic that comes through there from people primarily, let's be honest, living in Bedford, living in the western part of Manchester, that are trying to bypass the tolls and get on to Exit 12 to go south.
I understand where you're going. I'm just not sure what additional information a full analysis would really give us in this circumstance. If the primary concern is speed and, I don't think volumes necessarily are, have been observed as being an issue, given the background growth and the basic existing condition that we have here, if it's speed is an issue, that's not something we're going to solve through a traffic study for a subdivision. That's going to be something that requires enforcement and work through our public safety officials.
No, but I mean...
No, but I think that the report establishes what the applicant's got to prove, and that is, his traffic isn't going to make it worse.
But my question is... But my question is, how do you know that? How do you know that? Because we just, the town council just got through doing a review of polling stations, and one of the things that I asked for was a look at the level of studies, and what we were able to determine, that the level, I'm sorry, the level of service, the level of service from Babuca Lake Road and Daniel Webster on a non-election day is a C. As soon as you add election day to that particular traffic, it drops it down to an F. So now I'm asking the question. The applicant has provided information that says the level of service is going to be putting traffic onto these particular roads on a given day and time. So is the level of service an A, and it's dropping it down to a C? If that's the case, then that's fine.
The worst-case scenario was...
No, he said he's not dropping it down to anything.
Yeah.
It won't affect it.
We're talking about worst-case scenario, an increase of 72 PM peak hour trips going through these intersections as a result of the development of the subdivision. That volume, just as a number itself, is not going to materially impact the level of service at any of these intersections based on the volumes that Wire Road is capable of handling, at least in my professional opinion, based on 20 years.
You've got the AICP, Tim, I don't.
But that's, and Steve had to stamp this report. It's got his stamp and his...
I'm not...
And I've known Steve and have reviewed his studies over three different communities.
I'm not questioning the veracity. I'm just questioning the statement that's being made.
I understand. And again, I think if push came to shove, we could probably ask for additional information on what the existing level of service is at those intersections, whether Steve was comfortable giving that and stamping it without doing a full analysis. That's a question I can certainly raise.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments or questions? Nelson?
No, I think I've got most of mine were answered by Ken's really good presentation tonight. I'm ready to accept, to accept this plan for further...
Is that a motion?
Yeah, it was.
Yes. Pardon? It sounded a lot like a motion.
Yes, okay, I will if everyone has had their chance to speak. Desiree's got her hand up over there.
No, I'm going to second it.
Oh, you're going to second it? Okay, then I will move. We accept the plan for consideration.
And second by Desire, fault in the discussion of completeness. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven, zero, zero for completeness. Now, the recommendation of the staff is that this gets tabled until we hear the engineering reviews. You haven't proposed any waivers, or have you?
There is one that is added to the information that was submitted on the table tonight regarding road grades, where we're actually too flat, I believe.
Oh, you discussed that at different points. I remember that now.
I'm happy to speak to that if you're ready for me to do that.
Could I just quick on that, Ken? Could I ask which is the ones you, waiver of the sub, where the stations you're worried about, huh? They're not the links into either Whispering Pines or Wire Road?
No, I can speak to that if the board's ready for me to.
Yes, please. Go ahead.
We actually expected, at the very first meeting, I said I didn't think I needed any waivers. The last meeting I came to, I said reluctantly, I apologize, we might need three or four. We whittled it down to one. And the waiver is probably the most innocuous of everything. As, in new roads constructed, our main road is, again, A is the through road. Take, for instance, B. As B, road B approaches A, the regulations say that there should be a negative 2% slope off of road A so that no drainage from road B comes flowing through and up and on to road A. And also, if road B is steep, steeper, 8%, the 2% would act as a plateau for a car to stop. So it's a nearly level plateau to be able to look both ways and then enter road A's traffic. Well, all of our roads, B through G, with the exception of F, are 1.5% roads at their intersection. So to make the required negative 2% transition, which is the town road requirement, would actually make our roads steeper going into the road A. So it's completely illogical for these short cul-de-sac roads to have that scenario. If it was a steep road with a lot more traffic and a lot more potential for drainage to flow down it and into the road, yes, I would even be asking for it. However, in these circumstances, for B, C, D, E, not F and G, I didn't make that distinction on the waiver because I thought it wasn't necessary. That's the scenario. All of those roads are negative 1.5% as they leave road A. To have negative 2% would simply just make them steeper. Unnecessary.
Ken, is your request for a proposal part of what was submitted to Keach for review?
The waiver itself was not written when we submitted to Keach. However, the conditions were the negative 1.5%.
I think what you've said makes plenty of sense, but nevertheless, I think that we would be prudent to hear from our peer review engineer to make sure that they agree with...
I certainly would recommend holding off on any final action on the waiver, but having the discussion here tonight to set the stage is totally appropriate.
I certainly understand that, per, 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 so that's not true.
Any other comments or questions about the waiver request?
Just have DPW review that also.
I did forward it to Kyle.
You did?
Albeit somewhat late, but I did forward it, and we had discussions about this one particular waiver as potentially being needed, as well as several others, and we trimmed it down to this just single one. So I can't speak for him at the moment.
In Kyle's notes, which are obviously copied to us as part of the thing, it's, if you go to seven, it's L, he's saying that both stop sign and stop bars at roads B through G intersecting with A should be eliminated. Do you agree with that? I mean, I'm, I may be not stop signs, but it should say something, otherwise somebody's going to careen out of B into A without a stop. I'm sorry to be awkward.
I certainly read that. That's on page three of six, somewhat the lower third of the page, seven.
I to M.
Seven I.
It's L, actually, but still.
So L is the proposed stop signs.
And stop bars.
At the B through G roads intersecting with road A should be eliminated unless they meet the stop sign warrants in MUTCD or need to be there by engineering judgment. Reasoning should be verified. Basically, if I'm going to try to explain why I think that's there is perhaps they don't technically meet the warrant, and for, to expend costs on infrastructure that will have to be maintained over years and the cost associated with the infrastructure, there has to be some level of justification of why they're there. So that's a technical issue that I would say we just assume have the stop bar and the stop sign. However, as with any comment in either this level of memo or the additional ones that'll come, we generally have, we go through them, we identify which ones are very simply and easily taken care of, we have ones we have questions on, and we have some that we actually think shouldn't apply, and we say they shouldn't be addressed any further. We have a sit-down with staff and any departments. This will be one of them.
Could you, I would specifically ask if that one is discussed.
Ken, let me put the burden on you to educate me a little bit about this, the warrants from MUTCD. I can't fathom a situation where you have intersecting roads, four-way intersection, and nobody's got a signal to stop. How does that, what's the logic? And I know that I'm asking you to explain somebody else's logic, but how does that ever make sense?
I'm not comfortable trying to explain that to you tonight. I know you'd like me to.
I've heard Kyle explain it at highway safety committee meetings. There is legitimate engineering justification for not having the stop bar and stop sign. I'm not going to try to recite it, but...
I guess the idea that you've got to maintain a stop sign for whatever...
The volume coming off of that road is so low, it doesn't justify the maintenance cost long-term for the installation of the...
It does, it goes to volume, because the nature of the road, the length of the volume, the flatness, quote-unquote, of it, the travel speed of this. So for all these different factors, and engineers being extremely technical, they get down and then they have an equation, if you will, and it either meets it or it doesn't meet it.
Well, I get it. The dilemma that I'm in is that when we get reports from traffic engineers or from reports like this MUTCD that creates warrants, I tend to like to rely on them. And when I encounter a place where I think that they've gone off the reservation, it undermines my ability to do that, and that's why I'd like to know whether I can buy into their argument, or whether I've got to now question everything that I see from an organization that suggests that oncoming traffic ought to all meet in the middle.
It is my intention to have stop lines, stop bars and stop signs at all of those intersections.
I think it'd be my intention to support that, but I'm still kind of trying to figure out how I can rely on my experts and my reports in these agencies if it, if it's sort of, I can't quite make the logic right.
You have to remember that MUTCD isn't a book of engineering standards. It's the manual on uniform traffic control devices. It has totally everything to deal with when signs and markings are warranted, not necessarily designed.
I'm not sure that answered the question either, but I'm sorry. I didn't mean to get you sidetracked, Ken. Thank you for indulging my request. We'll see if I can do some research on my own.
As I said, this will be an item that we talk about directly with Kyle, so we'll have this resolved when we come back.
And just for the board's information, we do have a new town engineer, so you might want to start referring to our new town engineer, whose name is Don, who started yesterday.
Don, he or she?
She.
Don Tumala, who actually, you probably recall, was the engineer that presented the Super Dogs project.
Which one?
The Super Dogs project on DW Highway a few years back.
Minnedox survey.
She used to work in the Wilton survey.
And she now, she now works for Kyle?
She is now the town's engineer, yes.
So she works for Kyle, or Kyle works for her?
Kyle was the director of public works, so she works for Kyle.
Gotcha. Okay, Don. Thank you, Tim, for helping me with that bit of information.
She should write some explanation. Mayhem.
Maybe someone would tell the planning board when they hire new engineers. Sorry. Ken, do you have more that you'd like to offer us for tonight?
I don't. I'm happy to hear any, if the board has any questions, hear from the public if...
Yeah, I want to hear from the public because all these good folks have come out and I'm sure have a lot to tell us. With that, I'm sure they would also like to use the cable. You want to yield it up for them?
Sure.
Now then, if there are butters or citizens who wish to weigh in and offer the board some input on this proposal, knowing that what we've got before us is what was presented, but there isn't going to be final action tonight on this proposal, please come forward, introduce yourself, and sign in on the clipboard when you're ready. Please let us know what you've got on your mind.
My name is Paul Pelcinski, 132 Wire Road, and I guess I'm in a butter. Two times tonight, I heard the presenter suggest that one of the recreational uses of Babuca Brook would be for boating and kayaking. I have to disagree with that. My son, Kevin Pelcinski, is a professional kayak instructor, and he took his kayak along Babuca Brook, I think maybe two summers ago, from Wire Road down to Whispering Pine, and he says he would never do it again. He said it is so dangerous. It is, that whole stretch is full of underwater hazards, rocks, submerged trees, and I think there was a beaver dam at the time, and he said that he would never go down that in a boat or a kayak. So, well, it's a great place to go fishing, and that little access from Wire Road is really more of a pull-off so you can do fishing versus actually launch a boat. There's too many hazards there for it to be considered safe.
Okay.
And when it comes to stop signs, I just wanted to mention that Jason Drive, right next to this area, has four houses on it, and it has a stop sign. So, you know, you're mentioning about, well, there's not a lot of traffic. Well, four houses don't generate a lot of traffic either, but yet a few years back, they put it in stop signs.
No, I think Ken was in agreement on the stop signs with you and me and everybody else, that you put them where roads intersect each other.
Do you feel it's useful, the stop sign?
I guess for people who are visiting the neighborhood, you know, because you don't want them to just kind of roll right out onto Wire Road. And regarding traffic on Wire Road right now, it is at an all-time low, kind of, because Wallace Road is still closed up in, it's no longer closed at the Merrimack Line, but it is closed at Beal. So there is really no traffic on Wire Road right now. So if you were to go out there and look, you'd say there's no traffic.
That's because of the construction, though, isn't it?
Yeah, it's still closed.
It's a temporary situation.
Does it?
Thank you. Yes, sir, please come forward and take a second to settle in and sign in.
My name's Phil Knotts. I am a butter at 127 Wire Road, and I want to address the concern I have about the volume of traffic on Wire Road. The study that was done before in 2007, I don't know if it was updated in 2009, but since that time, in 2014, the toll booth was removed, which drastically increased the traffic on Wire Road from Bedford. And in addition, the straightening of Wallace Road in Bedford now is going to produce even more traffic coming down along Wire Road. From my experience, the volume has increased substantially, specifically since they took out that toll booth with people trying to avoid the tolls. And the report indicates the peak afternoon time for traffic of 72 vehicles in and out of that proposed development. But in my experience, the traffic is worse in the morning, particularly where you've got schoolchildren and school buses that are stopping along Wire Road with all this traffic coming in. That seems to be the worst time for people to try to get out onto Wire Road. So I think volume is a concern, and I think that the study that was done before, the whatever traffic counts they did are, have got to be substantially below what's currently happening. And I agree that now's not a good time to do a new study because of the construction up in Bedford, but once that construction's done, it's going to be Katy bar the door with regard to traffic volume on Wire Road in the morning and in the evening when people return from work. Also...
The toll booth's right there on Wire Road?
Also, I have a concern about the sight line on Wire Road, because just south of me on Wire Road, there's a ridge that, you come up over that ridge, you have no sight line to Lois Lane and Whispering Pine, which is right there. As soon as you get over the crest of that hill, that intersection is right there, and there's no way you can see it coming down south along Wire Road. And I don't know whether that's been addressed at all in the study that was done before. Certainly not mentioned, apparently, in this update.
I suspect that it probably wouldn't have been considered if it's off of the sight of this subdivision, because they'd just be looking at what this bit did. But, and so you're probably right that it wasn't considered.
It needs to be considered in light of the increased volume of traffic. My other issues were town water. How does town water come into the development? Ken?
Please come forward. MVD water will actually connect not only to Whispering Pine on the east side. It'll come through, then it'll go down Wire Road to Lois Lane. Lois Lane's the terminus of the MVD service at that point, so it'll come up Wire Road to the new road and then be a loop.
Okay. Thank you, Ken.
And with regard to stormwater drainage on road G, can you tell me where that, where that drains?
Sorry.
We're doing a little unconventional, I'm asking questions to...
No problem at all. Road G has catch basins. Everything's closed in this. Again, there's curbs, catch basins, then they feed into drain main hulls, which ultimately make their way to treatment swales. Not only road A through this section, G, F, B, all gets collected, and between lots 57 and 58, a line, drainage line will come out into this treatment swale and into this infiltration basin.
Okay.
I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knotts. You don't have to rush. We'll get everybody. Take a minute to sign in, and then when you're ready.
I live at 18 Whispering Pines Lane.
Can you introduce yourself again? I didn't quite catch your name.
Richard Camo.
Richard, thank you.
I actually have some... I actually have some questions for the board and for the developer. Once these sewers are put in, actually, we know the streets are going to be dug up, who repaves the street?
You know, I have--
The street's falling apart now.
Yeah, sure. I don't know the answer. Obviously, they're going to get repaved if the streets are torn up by the sewers. I don't know who does it, whether it's the town, or DPW, or the developer, whoever's responsible for those things. But obviously, they're not, you know, dig them up and leave them, you know, dirt patches in the road, so.
Yeah, but I'm not talking about patches. I mean, patches don't do us any good.
I think that a good portion of this sewer doesn't go down the middle of a road. It goes like across country, and so they're only going to encounter roads in certain spaces. I don't know that the, I have no idea who would even--
Right in front of my house.
I don't know who would repave the roads, or be responsible for deciding that, or be able to tell you. I think what your question's getting at is, what would get repaved? Whether they would just do a little bit of it, or they'd repave, you know, some length of it? I honestly don't know.
Because with that, and then additional traffic, the road's going to fall apart. Other than that, you went to look at Brenda Lane and--
Richard, I need you to, can you, you've got to get the microphone close to you or face towards it when you're talking.
You were saying that you didn't have a chance to look about the way the water's going off the high roads and everything?
Well, I think that what he said was that he went out there and he took a look, and he could tell where water had been, but obviously, we haven't had much rain, so he didn't see water.
Well, I wanted to invite him to go to my house and look in the water catch basin that the town put in. There's still water in it, almost up to the top of the grate.
From rains yesterday, or--
I can't use my driveway in the wintertime, because everything runs off the road into my yard. And I got a catch basin that can't handle it. I get ice, I can't walk through my, out of my yard. Sometimes I can't even drive my car out, because I get stuck in the ice.
What's your address?
I'm sorry?
What is your address?
Seventeen--
Seventeen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen Whispering Pines. Sorry, I thought seventeen.
And the last time I spoke with him, he said that in that 100-foot space between--
The open space.
My property-- No, it's where he's, that 100-foot--
Kind of a strip buffer.
Yeah. He's going to be taking some of the trees down. I'd like to know if he could mark those trees that are along my property line, so that I know that they're not cutting down my trees, because I have trees back there, too. And I don't know which ones they're going to take down, if they're going to take them all down, I don't know. I'd like him to mark them, so that I can make sure my trees aren't taken down.
Well, he certainly doesn't have the right to take down your trees. I'm not sure that marking them ahead of time, or at this early stage, is feasible to do, but I get the idea that you want to make sure that your trees aren't there.
But when they're ready to do it, I'd like him to do it.
If it's not, if it's, I don't know that it'll, the solution will manifest itself by marking trees, or because a surveyor has surveyed the lot line, and then you can sort of see where your property starts, and his stops, and all of that. But clearly, they don't have the right to cut down your trees. And so there'll be some mechanism for resolving that situation if you're concerned that they're coming over the line.
And the next thing, I'm getting hawks in my backyard now. I've had three of them hanging around my house for the last two weeks.
Hawks?
I just talked to the person across the street from me, and he saw five in his yard. Is there something going on back there that's driving hawks?
Heavens, I don't know.
Field mice.
I've lived here for 40 years, and I haven't seen a hawk anywhere near my house. Now I get them walking in my backyard.
No, I don't know. We've got chipmunks everywhere. There's probably good food supply for them. I got a small dog, and I worry about the owls.
I was going to say, Mr. Camo, I got a great-horned owl that's hanging around in my backyard. He's absolutely fun to watch. He sits there, you see him swoop down, and two minutes later, he's coming back with something.
Yeah.
He's got something.
So the problem is, we have cats back there.
I can appreciate that.
Ken, you didn't invite him, did you?
No. Do you know if the town is doing anything back there that would be driving them out?
I don't know. I mean, Ken, it's private property. Do you know of any activity that's back there that's going on?
Nothing that would suggest that.
I mean, I would offer you, sir, one comment. I've never seen so many chipmunks floating around in this town as there are. I mean--
Yeah, this is your bumper.
I've never seen--
Floating down from the sky, you mean?
Well, yeah. I mean, the point is, if there's chipmunks or similar items, I mean, the hawks are going to come where there's food, and if they can see lots of little chipmunks running around, and there's been a bumper crop of them, I mean, I've got them running up and down drain pipes in my house. So I think you're just catching what happened from not having a hard winter, and we didn't kill them off. They're all floating around, they've all bred and--
We've had hard winters in the last 40 years that I've been here, and I've never seen a hawk.
The current bunch of chipmunks, yeah.
But this winter wasn't a hard one. I mean, they're everywhere.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the--
Thank you, Mr. Camo.
Hi, I'm Rihanna Barrigan for Bryant Circle. I guess I want to, my biggest question, besides the potential garden or field, what do you guys see as the benefit to the town?
For the donated lot?
No, this project. How is this going to benefit the residents?
Sure. It's a piece of private property, and so the developer is exercising his rights to do what he wants to do with his property. He doesn't have to necessarily establish some net benefit from the town, other than, you know, additional places people could build some houses, and that sort of thing.
Why would you vote yes?
If he meets all of the standards in our subdivision regulation, then he's entitled to our vote. And I don't know that he has. We haven't gotten that far, of course, but that's really what we're getting at, is we're checking off all the boxes to see if he meets all those standards, and--
All right, so it's town water? They're going to be on town water, these houses?
Yes, they'll be on town water and sewer.
And we're currently in a severe drought and on a water ban. So how can we predict that we're not going to run out of water with 65 additional homes to provide water to?
I know that some of the commercial projects have to get the indication from MVD.
They have to get a letter from MVD saying they can provide proper service.
So that hasn't occurred?
I don't know if it's occurred or not, but it would have to occur by the time that gets to the finish line, is that he's going to have to get, essentially, the consent from the water district that they can--
And are we sure it's MVD and not Penachuck? Doesn't Penachuck service--
This is MVD here.
This, okay.
Prior to August 16th, will we know? Will you approve the application?
Before the August 16th meeting? Probably we would know. If we don't know, then it would be a condition of approval that he can meet without necessarily being before the board.
It's pretty important at this point, right? With two wells down that--
It potentially could be, although 66 homes in a town of 9,000 doesn't really move them, 9,000 homes.
9,000?
9,000 homes.
Oh, I'm going to, scared me there for a second.
Not people, homes. Hard to say that that's going to make an impact. But then that's MVD's call, really, it's not ours. But if we have that as a condition of approval, and MVD says, you know what, we can't do it, we can't give you your 66, then his approval's no good, so problem over.
So there was a meeting with the conservation team?
Conservation Commission.
What was the results of that, I guess?
Yeah. Ken was describing them to us, to us. The meeting was just last night, and the chairman of that commission actually writes his own minutes and sends me the report by email. I assume he hasn't had time to do that yet, because I haven't gotten his email. I would know that we'll definitely have it by the time August 14th-- 14th?
16th.
16th comes around. Typically, their response is concerns about fertilizer, concerns about non-invasive, or invasive plant species, non-native grasses, salt, and those sorts of things. Their authority, the Conservation Commission's authority, is advisory to the planning board, so they don't really have approval or disapproval authority.
So they advise to you? And then they advise to you, and you take that information, and you decide your vote based on that?
We do, and we generally accept all of their recommendations. We have had situations where we've given an applicant approval conditioned on meeting the Conservation Commission's conditions, whatever they may be, and then the applicant's got to, then afterward, go to the Conservation Commission.
Will that be available publicly?
The Conservation Commission, yeah. It's a public meeting, you can go. And their minutes are published, and they're public, and their advice to us will be public. All of our records through Tim's department that we consider, every piece of paper that we get, you can go down to his office and ask to look at.
You can go online anytime at merrimactv.com and watch whatever meeting you want to watch.
I just like search for it. So I searched for conservation meeting--
Merrimacktv.com, it'll pull up on, there's like a box on left-hand side. It's got, you know, Town Council, School Board, CONCOM, EdCAC, Planning Board--
I've looked at it, yeah, they're long, though. Sometimes I like to read it. It's easier for me to--
In terms of, in terms of minutes, if you go to the town website, go under Boards and Commissions, and then each page has the listing to agendas and minutes.
Perfect, thank you.
There's also, somewhere on the town's website, an ability to subscribe to a mailing list where that stuff will just come to you.
I asked somebody, and she said that doesn't exist, so.
It does. Does CONCOM get included on that circulation?
When I update pages on the Conservation Commission page, there's a button that I click that says, send e-subscriber notification. So if you are signed up through the town's website, which is a year or so old, it's the new website, those notifications go automatically once a webpage is updated, and that button is checked. And I check that on any time I upload minutes and agendas.
So I should see it on the website? Slash subscribe. Can I put my email down, under applicable, and you just add me?
Maybe not on there, but get me your email, get you straight down.
Not that I speak for the MVD, but what I can tell you is that there are seven wells in town. One well is offline permanently.
Thank you.
The other two have been locked based on the current PFC issue that we have, and we have four wells that are functioning online right now that are, their PFOW levels are right in the teens right now, currently. So based on what's been communicated to us, there's more than adequate water supply to provide to the MVD users in the town of Merrimack.
Is the ban precautionary, then?
So, that's what I was getting to. So the odd even ban that you see doesn't necessarily go to a drought, per se. It actually goes to the ability of the aquifer being able to percolate back to its original level. So if you're using one well, in layman's terms, and it's at one particular level, and then it gets drained down to a certain level, sometimes they have to shut that well off in order for the well to repercolate back up to its specific operating level. And they do that, and it's a pretty good management tool that MVD uses, so that they're able to strategically turn wells on and off, so that they're balancing the charge of the regeneration of the well water.
Recharge.
Recharge, thank you. Be able to, so that that well can recharge, and be able to recharge, so that it can be put back online. One of the things that came before the town council a couple of months ago is we had to approve a purchase by the Conservation Commission for some property off of Bean Road, Clara Drive. There's a piece probably not owned by the Conservation Commission that includes Bousik Brook, and they are exploring, they're working with the MVD to explore the possibility of putting not one, but two particular wells in those particular locations. So that's pretty exciting. So the piece that I can give you, from a town perspective, is, and again, not speaking for MVD, because I don't, I'm not employed, nor do I represent MVD, is that they are constantly looking for new sources of water to provide to not just the residential users of our community, but obviously, the industrial and the business users. So you can have a level of assurance that, a lot of people don't like the ban, and I certainly don't blame them. They want to be able to water their lawn whatever they darn please, and I get it. But in the same token, this is why, you know, we pay water fees to the MVD, because we're paying them to do a job to manage the level of water and be able to monitor the usage and the consumption, so that people have access to potable, clean water every day.
Okay.
I want to add two benign and maybe one sharp comment to what Bill--
Oh, God, here we go.
MVD, not everyone is necessarily alert to the idea, but MVD is a separate corporate government entity. It's not the town, it's not the school board, it's its own separate thing with elected officials, its own taxing authority. So the decisions they make are not necessarily subject to even the town council's approval and whatnot.
Correct.
The other one that's sort of also neutral is that when they do the odd and even watering ban for outdoor watering, it may not necessarily be readily apparent to folks, but the water consumption for outside watering, and sprinklering, and pool filling outpaces what you use to eat and drink and bathe by a factor of 10 or more. Usually, a person uses 50 to 150 gallons of water for their bathing, and cooking, and all of that stuff. And when you water your lawn for an hour, you've used, I don't know, 1,000 gallons of water.
My grass is dead. I'm not--
Yeah, no, not you, I'm sorry. So the reason for the ban is not necessarily to, you know, try to preserve enough water to water lawns, but the amount that you spend watering lawns just takes so much of a burden on the system compared to what people eat and drink. The comment that's a little bit sharper towards the MVD is when they say that they've been looking for water supplies, or that they always are, they've reported that for every minute that I've ever been on this board, and that it's been quite a while. And so far, we haven't really brought any new sources online.
Except what I just--
And I'm really glad to hear that, that's exciting, I agree with you. But in their search for water, I guess they haven't discovered Penachuck Water Works, which they have an interconnection with, and they could get water from if they chose to. And that's nothing to do with your comments.
Interesting, I'm sure there's more to it.
There, yeah, there always is. Thank you. Is there more that you want to add for--
I mean, I guess my biggest, like, big-picture question is, as a resident, I mean, what say do we have in these big projects? Because they seem to just be a pattern in Merrimack. It just seems to be one big project after another, and the public comes out, and we say, you know, listen to us, this isn't what we want. But it happens.
Sure. It's a bit of a, I'll do my best to give you as brief an answer as I can, because the way that you have an influence on it is actually much, much earlier in the process than when we are here. When the applicant gets before the planning board, like I said, they've got a subdivision or a site plan ordinance that tells them what they've got to do. Build your buildings this far back from the road, put the driveways here, they should be this wide, you should light them this way, whatever those things are. And if he meets them all, he's entitled to his approval. When he goes to the zoning board, he's looking for permission to do something different than what the rules require, because there's some special reasons why they should be able to. And the zoning board can give him some relief from the regulations that we apply. Those places are ways where you can come forward and say, I don't think the applicant put the driveway in the right place, or I don't think the applicant's lighting is right, or I don't think that, the things that you really want to have input on, where you just say, I don't think that this piece of property should be used this way, is something that starts with the master plan for the town. And that's something--
But I'm not in a butter, so I don't get notification.
And the master plan isn't necessarily on a butter issue, that's a town-wide issue. But, you know, everybody's busy. Nobody wants to sort of think ahead to maybe in five years, there's going to be a project that I don't like, and I better think about what that might be, and try to have involvement in it. But that's where the master plan dictates what the ordinance say, and that dictates sort of the next step down the road.
I'll just add, if you don't mind, Bob. Ultimately, the profession of land use planning and the practice of developing land and property in the United States is always a balance of private individual property owner rights and the rights of a community to regulate--
Balance, right?
It's balance. The community's perspective, as Bob stated, starts at the master plan level, where you develop, these are the goals and objectives of how we want our community to look.
So I get a vote in that?
That then gets translated into ordinance work, where the planning board, the town council, develop ordinances and regulations to implement that vision from the master plan. What we have and what we work from is a zoning ordinance, subdivision, and site plan regulations that are the accumulation of the vision of previous master plans and previous planning boards and councils and selectmen and voters at town meeting that have said, this is how Merrimack is going to develop, and these are the requirements. Private property owner, if you have this piece of property and you can comply with these requirements, you are entitled to an approval under the way that land use planning works.
So there's public voting about that, the specifics?
There used to be, before we changed to a charter-- There used to be, before we changed to a charter form of government, the town council right now has final say on any changes to the zoning ordinance. And actually, the next item on our agenda are some changes to the zoning ordinance we're proposing to make. The changes to the subdivision and site plan regulations happen here at the planning board because those are the planning board's regulations. The town does not have a direct say in zoning changes anymore. In smaller towns, they have a traditional town meeting, and prior to the development of a town council form of government here in Merrimack, zoning changes were done once a year at town meeting. But the charter that was adopted...
That'd be helpful. That'd probably reduce the, you know, we'd get to bed a little earlier. I wouldn't feel like I have to sit here to be heard.
There are pros and cons to both. And this may not be a suggestion that suits you either, but I could say with almost certainty that every single one of the boards in town, including this one, has vacancies for people that are interested in casting a vote and being a part of this.
I've thought about it a little bit.
It's a dedication to, a bit of time. It's not maybe as overwhelming as you might think it is, but planning board, zoning board, Conservation Commission, economic development, there's a list as long as your arm in terms of things that are always, always searching for people. And it sounds like you've got the spark to be interested in this stuff, so.
Yeah, I have two kids, I'm tired, so I care.
And I got four, so I get it.
How old are they though? Mine are one and three, they're exactly...
They're a little older than that now.
I'll trade you your one and three-year-old for a 14-year-old girl.
I hear that a lot. No, I'm definitely concerned, that's a, I, I'm, I'm not going to brush that off at all.
Can we, can we do more for you? Is there more that you want to tell us?
I just want to make one final comment. You know, we, we moved to Merrimack, we used to live in Hudson, it started to get overcrowded, too much building, too much traffic. The residents don't care about the schools, they stopped voting for the budget because the kinds of people that were moving in, it's a border town. And I'm starting to see a little bit of that move into Merrimack and it's sad. Not only do we pay a lot, but it's a, is a great town and I think we're teetering on a dangerous edge of building, 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 economy, economy, economy. And I hear this project, we're talking about conservation, it would be conserved if we didn't build on it. So that's the end.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Are there other butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Yes, please come forward.
On this project?
Yeah.
Richard Petro, Two Bryant Circle, I'm in a butter. I have a couple of questions. One is concerning the catch basin, a large one at the northwest corner. Is that going to be constantly full of water?
I don't think that he suggested any of his catch basins were going to be quote "wet ponds," so, and with sand and gravel, I would suspect...
Technically, it's, it's not a catch basin, I think he's speaking of an infiltration basin.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
And in the northwest corner, that would be the one that's in the pit currently.
Yes.
And it's not designed to hold water, it's designed to collect water and infiltrate that at the back of the ground. That said, if there's a substantial enough storm, we design for 25-year storms, 50-year storms, and check to the 100-year storm. If there's a 100-year storm, periodic, for a period of time, there will be some water in there until the recharge allows that to be absorbed.
Okay, as long as it's not constant, it doesn't bother me.
It's not, it's not designed to be constant and then become a wetland, so to speak, that's not the intent.
Yep. Now, you speak of the way Babusak Brook runs through there, on wet seasons, that whole lower plateau is completely covered with water. Instead of the Brook being five foot wide, it's like 100 foot wide.
Indeed, in fact, there's flood plain down there, 100-year flood zone, we have that mapped on our plans and show the line on all of our plans for the 100-year flood limit, and that's at the toe of the slope. All the development is above the top of the slope, so, well, I would agree that...
This is down that embankment, you go down there, it's like a field.
I, I don't doubt that.
Yeah.
But that's not where we're proposing any improvements.
Right, exactly. Now, a question for you also is, as far as traffic goes, I've been there since 1975 and when we were first there, it was country. You were lucky if you saw five cars go by on Wire Road on a weekend. It's 1,000 times more now, except for this last couple of months when the road's been closed, Wallace Road's been closed. It's like been back in the old days. It's been nice and quiet and terrific. I wish they would keep it closed. But I, I can see a traffic count needing to be done. Once this road is completely open and people get used to having it open again, I think it is going to be a big difference, big, big difference between how it is like five years ago as compared to now. There's going to be a big difference.
I think you're right, Mr. Petro. I think that when the Wallace, when the Bedford side construction gets done, Bedford's doing this for a reason, and it's, it's to sort of have, put people from Bedford access the turnpike through Merrimack. I'm not sure that we were necessarily in the loop on that plan, but in any event, this guy's subdivision isn't the, isn't the cause or the culprit of that, and I think that's going to require some different kind of planning townwide and an understanding as to what Wire Road will be going forward. But I agree with you 100%.
I can see Wire Road and Bedford Road, that intersection, it's probably going to need a traffic light.
Oh heavens, no.
Don't say that. Please don't say that.
Watch. It'll probably happen, because people don't know, let's see, am I in a right or a left? Do I go or do I won't go? It's going to get worse.
You're right that people don't always know what to do at a four-way stop, but amazingly, we have people come and suggest traffic lights all the time. Traffic lights are not the solution for traffic, they actually cause it, they don't resolve it, so. Do you have more that you want to add? I think you have another question on your mind that you're struggling to grasp, if you ever remember.
No, that pretty much covers it. Everybody's speaking, has come before me, has told, said things that I wanted to say also, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petro. Is there another butter citizen who wishes to weigh in? Come on forward, please.
I just have one additional question for the board. Is the 2007-2009 traffic study available to review? I went to the planning board this afternoon and asked to see the file and it wasn't, I wasn't provided.
If you're looking for the file for tonight's meeting, no, it would not be in that. If we wanted to go back and look through the old archived files, I'm sure we could probably find something in there, but that would take a little bit of digging.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a public document, so yes, you can get it, it's just a matter of whatever process you got to go through to get, figure out where it is and...
So if I go tomorrow and ask for it, then someone can dig it out for me?
We'll find it somewhere in the archives, yes.
And then the update that you just issued tonight will be in there also?
It should already be in there, yes.
It wasn't in there this afternoon, so.
All right, thank you. The original, the original one is in the town files, but there's a lot of files for the historic part of this. I can, I can put my hands on it and I'll email it to you because...
Thank you.
There were, there was a lot of files that day that I looked at the old records.
Sir, if you wanted that traffic study, the current one, feel free to take it.
Well, thank you.
It's in the file, but it saves you, saves them looking for that one.
Yeah, I've got an extra copy right here.
Should I email you? Just stop by, we'll, we'll make sure we have it.
All right, thank you.
Any other butters or citizens wish to weigh in?
I thought it was...
I'm William Hebbel. I live at 153 Wire Road. I want to bring a little bit of discussion back to that catch basin, because it seems to be about 25, 30 feet above my head.
The infiltration basin that's now the gravel pit, is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm wondering, where does the water go?
Down.
Yeah, but it's got to be spreading out, it'll probably be heading towards the Brook.
Ultimately, yeah, eventually it does move laterally as it gets deeper underwater, but I think the possibility that it's going to resurface or, you know, weep out the side of a slope and head for your property, that's probably something that they're going to understand very well with engineering. And in a sandy, gravelly environment, probably fairly unlikely. They're talking about going down 11 feet down, not finding the seasonal high water table, there's a lot of room for water to go underground there.
Okay. Well, I would like to be able to understand that a little bit better, get some confidence in it. The other thing is that I have a well water.
Okay.
So it may get contaminated that way.
Back to the question about the infiltration, as this goes forward, this peer review that's happening has calculations about how the drainage system will work, and we will get that report from our peer review engineer. It will include what he said the infiltration system will do and whether our town peer review agrees with all of that. And all of that stuff is available to you publicly if you want to look at it. All you got to do is get in touch with Tim, he'll get you a copy of it.
Okay, when, when is that kind of thing available?
Ken's stuff is already in the file. Steve Keach's stuff hasn't arrived yet back from our peer review engineer, that's why we're not deciding any, anything tonight, we're going to hear it in another month. But, so, any day, Steve Keach's stuff will be in there.
Okay.
Now, your well is, you're at 153, you said?
Yeah.
Is 153 visible on any of the plans that we've got, Ken?
Unfortunately.
It's all by itself.
Back in old, old school. If I'm not mistaken, sorry, I think it has a bit...
Do your best to point and then come back to the microphone before you talk. So he's the house that's the notch out of the side of your property?
Yeah, in our entire Wire Road frontage, he is the cutout, the one notch, if you want to call it that, that's directly adjacent to Babusak Brook.
Okay.
So he is correct that he is downslope of, of the plateau, he's at the toe of that main plateau, and so yes, he is downslope of it. Yes, indeed, water will enter that infiltration basin, it will go down, but it will move laterally as the volume of water increases. It won't just go down, it'll also migrate out. We do also have a spillway on that, because obviously our infiltration basin's sized accordingly for certain storms. Larger storms, if there's a high volume, there is a spillway for surface relief. It could flow out. Because of the way the pit's been excavated, that is really directed more north and slightly east where this gentleman's lot is to the west. And so surface water, if it does overflow, won't affect him, so I don't believe it'll be affected in either way. In addition to our PE who did the design, and Steve Keach who is a PE doing the peer review, there's also the state of New Hampshire, DES Alteration of Terrain, that reviews it a third time. So this is not taken lightly and just one simple design, cross your fingers and hope it's right. This is multiple reviews to make sure that, and in fact, the state in particular, they're very cognizant about no offsite effects to any butters.
How far away is his well from your infiltration basin?
I can't say that I, I have that distance, but it's certainly in the 200, 250 feet range if I have, if I can estimate that.
Okay, thank you. So a lot of the information that he's talked about from the DES engineers is also a public document, it's just on file with the state instead of here. But you can, I can get your hands on that information too if you want to have a look at it and see if you disagree with any of the work that engineers do or want to have any input on the DES level.
So where do I go to get that information? Is that...
You haven't filed an AOT yet.
No.
So when you file an AOT, he's in a butter, he's going to get notice of it, right?
Correct.
So you'll get notice that there's been an application with the State Department of Environmental Services, and then that notice will tell you where you can go if you want to get a copy of the information.
Okay. Do I have to do anything special to, to make that happen?
Just ask for it. Follow the instructions, that'll be in that letter, that you get that notice. You don't need a lawyer or any kind of fee or fines or anything like that, it's, it's a public document, you're entitled to it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hebbel. Any other butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? All right. Let's not all go around twice, but come on back.
Just one more question. The last time we were here, the board talked about going on and walking the property. Has that, any of that happened?
It hasn't happened. Now that you mention it, I'm still interested in doing that. We did talk about doing that. I think that we mentioned that we would do that as a part of its formal review because we were in a preliminary before. But you're right, we did not bring that up tonight, it was discussed before. But yeah, I wouldn't mind going for a walk on it. Is anybody else interested?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ken, when do you think we could accomplish something like that?
Well, there's only one of me and many of you, so you tell me what you'd like to do.
Yeah, but you've got to, is it all staked out, Ken? I mean, you've got to stake something. We really need to know basically the locations of roads A through G. Vaguely, not tying you to the nearest.
Certainly, I, and we've done it in the past, we've marked the center line so we can have a guide, no question about it. From our, from our schedule to be able to fit that in, it's certainly a week at the minimum for us to do that. I think the bigger question...
We'd need to do public notice as well, so.
Yes.
I would like to back that into when we likely will continue this meeting till, if I could jump to that briefly and then we can see what the window we have is. From my standpoint, and I recognize, Tim suggested potentially continuing this to August 16th. I'm already double booked that night in two different towns.
Later is fine, that was the minimum.
Later is fine. Please, please, because I shall need me at the 16th meeting.
So with that said, and it can't be earlier, it needs to be the next possible meeting after that perhaps, which would put us September 6th.
September 6th, yes.
Let's do it, 6th September.
Would you like to have the site walk somewhat close to the September 6th meeting so it's all fresh in your mind? Would you like to have it sooner?
We've got nothing much better to do on Labor Day, I suppose we could all walk around there, because the 5th is Labor Day.
Our fieldwork schedule is such that we're literally months out in fieldwork, so I'll have to fit this in. So I'd rather have as much time as possible to make it happen from a fieldwork standpoint to mark where we'll walk. So with that said, if the, if our hearing is September 6th, you tell me late in the following week, mid to late, I mean, the previous week, is that reasonable to you?
Saturdays.
Saturdays, what is your preference?
Saturday.
Saturday the 3rd.
Saturday the 3rd.
Labor Day weekend.
It's a Labor Day weekend.
Yeah, you're probably going to find some people who don't want to do it on that weekend.
Go back one week from that, you'd be looking at...
27th of August.
27th of August.
Can you make that happen, Ken? I can certainly have it marked by then.
I know it's probably blasphemy to suggest it, but the September 20th meeting would give you another couple of weeks to figure out how to make this arrangement happen. And I'm not pushing you back, I'm just trying to sort of suggest...
I think I'd lose a client.
Let's don't do that then.
And you're getting into your timeframes since you've accepted the application as well.
Okay.
I'd prefer to keep the September 6th continuation date and if the boards agreeable, we'll do the 27th as a site walk.
Yep.
That's okay.
It's acceptable to me. Yes?
Yeah. What time?
Generally, we try to get these done as early in the morning as we can. Is it okay with you to start at 8:00?
Yes.
I'm not going to be there, so.
8 o'clock.
8 o'clock is absolutely fine with me, and I would suggest we meet at the pit entrance off of Wire Road.
Yes.
That, there'll be enough parking for vehicles right in that entrance, we don't have to drive necessarily down into the pit. The users of that right now pull off to the left and stack their cars, I think that's perfectly adequate for what we try to do, so I would suggest we meet there at 8 o'clock.
In the effort to give some public notice of the meeting, there's got to be an area that's descriptive enough to tell the public where to come. Has that got an address or something?
I just need whoever makes a motion to continue to September 6th to also make a motion-
Microphone.
Sorry. I need whoever makes the motion to continue the application to September 6th to also make a separate motion to determine that the planning board will hold a site park at 8:00 AM on August 27th, and to be noticed appropriately by the community development department.
Okay.
The entrance to that pit is nearly opposite Bryant Circle?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Have we, I've forgotten if we've even accepted this.
Yes, you did.
We've accepted, we're not going to do the waiver now, we're going to wait for some engineers, and so we're ready to either finalize any discussion the board wishes to continue to have, or take up that motion to schedule a site visit and continue the thing till September 6th.
Just note that the site walk motion will require new notice, the continuance to September 6th will not.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set up a site walk on this site for 27th of August at 8:00 PM with full notice-
8:00 AM.
8:00 AM, so what did I say, PM?
PM.
I must be getting old.
You really want to use your headlamp, don't you, Alister?
With full notification, publication, whatever the word is, Tim, so that it is available for the general public to attend, and that would be a motion I would like to make.
Second.
Motion and second, I just want to say before we go ahead and vote for the benefit of all of the public here, when we do a sidewalk, site walk, you're welcome to come and participate as well. So it is a public meeting of the board, we tend not to conduct much discussion, but you will see what we see.
I will note that it is not a public hearing, it is not a continued portion of this public hearing, so there will not be a butter notice for this site walk, but there will be notice posted at the various locations, town hall, bulletin boards, library, as well as online on the website.
Okay. With that in mind, is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? That is 7:00. Did your motion wrap up the continuance as well, or just the last?
No, no, I picked up a-
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this to date certain September 6th.
With no further notice to butters.
With no further notice to-
In this room and-
At 7:00 in this room.
At 7:00 in this room, thank you.
Is there a second for Bill's?
Yes, so I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Alister. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7:00 to continue it. We will see you then, we'll see all of you then as well.
Thank you very much.
For the site walk.
What's next on our agenda? What else we got here? If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Public hearing.
Yes. Given the hour of the evening, I, if the board is okay with it and does not want to get into the matter of a zoning ordinance, public hearing and a discussion about further amendments to the zoning ordinance at this hour of the night, I would suggest that potentially we continue the public hearing to the August 2nd meeting, and also the workshop to that meeting as well, so that we're not doing this at 10:30, 11 o'clock at night.
So moved.
Yes.
And is that- A second for Bill's motion?
Be.
No further notice.
Second.
Can I also ask, is it your intention to introduce that, the document that you produced on July the 5th for the workshop discussion?
The workshop PowerPoint will be that night as well, that would cover both of these.
Okay.
I just thought we should-
So there's a motion to continue items number 8 and 9 to our August 2nd-
Yes.
-meeting with no further notice in this room at 7:00 PM. Any other discussion? All in favor of doing so, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7:00 to do that. Item 10 under discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern, somewhere in my stuff, I've got a memo related to a bond reduction request for a Windy Hollow subdivision. And what I have is a memo from Kyle Fox dated July 14th, 2016, saying Tomason Drive LLC is seeking a reduction in the bond amount that was posted for Windy Hollow Circle, which is part of the Windy Hollow subdivision. An updated road bond estimate form was submitted on July 5th, 2016, that reflects work remaining to be completed. The estimate form was completed by Meridian Land Services. Windy Hollow Circle is a 1,080 feet long cul-de-sac road that originates on Tomason Drive. The quantities for the estimate form were taken from the conditionally approved plans dated 9 to 14 with a revision date of December 9th of 14 and March 13th of 15. Kyle writes that he finds the reduced total bond amount of $86,737.88 to be sufficient to complete the remainder of the improvements scheduled in the approved plan set, and recommend that the planning board grant the reduction in the amount of the bond. Should the reduction be granted, the remaining monies in the bond would be greater than the maintenance bond amount that will be required upon acceptance of the road, which is $55,982. With that-
So moved.
There's a motion and a second by Mr. Boyd and Mr. Milns to reduce the bond amount to $86,000 or by $86,000?
To $86,000.
To $86,000. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 7:00 to grant that. Does anyone else have any other items of discussion or concern?
Let's do some minutes.
Let's do some minutes. Number 11 on our agenda is the approval-
I got the hint there.
Of the minutes of either June 7th or June 21st. Let's take up June 7th first.
Really good something here.
Does anyone have a motion with respect to the minutes of June 7th?
I like the motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Wait a second. I got a, I got a-
We're not going to rush through it, we'll get you there. Is there a second for Desiree's motion? Second by Jeff.
Okay.
Man, that's a long package of minutes. Very three-word-y.
Yeah.
Nelson, did you find them?
Well, I found them, yes, and I found, the reason I wanted to find them is I had, I had gotten mostly through these and I found a couple of things, I think bear correction. On page 1 of the Planning and Zoning Administrator's month, report, the second paragraph says, Secretary Disco questioned if any members of the board wish to express an opinion. I do believe that that was-
Me.
Yes, Secretary Milns, and rather, and I would, up above, under call to order, the second sentence, it says, Secretary Milns, acting as chair, designated Nelson Disco to sit. You see, he, you had stepped down, it doesn't say-
No, he hadn't even got here, he hadn't got here at that time, he arrived-
He wasn't even here, so Secretary Milns took over the meeting, absconded with the gavel, and made these orders that-
So noted.
That are on the record, thank you. That's the only thing I found, it is small print, and there's a lot of pages, but I did not-
I didn't think we would be revisiting the War of Independence in this, between Mr. Disco and Mr. Milns.
Does the weight person making the motion in the secondary agree with those changes?
Yes.
All in favor of approving the minutes of June 7th as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?